This is the Town of Hennessy Board of Trustees regular meeting June 15th at 2023 Town Hall. It's six o'clock. Call for order and roll call, please.
Dave.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
Bert.
Here.
Randy.
Here.
Cliff.
Here. Report from the Hennessy United Board.
They didn't... Last month they set their date for the Wine and Chocolate Festival. They're not having a board meeting in June, July, and August 18th is their next following week after the rodeo. They have skipped the regular board meeting for the rodeo, so they're gonna have it the following week. The Wine Festival is like 12 to 6 or 11.
Yeah, for the hours.
11 to 6. They did... They extended it to... That's all I got on it. Barbara's at from today.
Consider approval of the consent agenda. A minutes of the March meeting. Approval of claims as follows. May purchase orders $1,319.56. June purchase orders $42,587.17. June RSTF fund is $62,974.93. June library fund is $915.94. The June Street and Alley Fund is $7,237.39. Accept the following reports, Treasury, Library, and Police.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second that. Roll call, please.
Harold.
Yes.
Cliff.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Randy.
Yes.
Dave.
Yes.
Number four, citizen comments. Town administrator report purchases and new employees.
We had one new employee, Daniel Schmonic. He was hired to replace Dylan Atherton, who had to be let go. And then Ronnie Decker also resigned on the 24th... Well, she quit on the 24th of May. Purchasing, we got that... Harold, we got that new lawn mower. Thank you. And got it already put in use. Not tore up, just mowing. The reef project for the waterline on Dunlap, you guys talked about last month. We had a pre-construction meeting, kind of meet and greet, to meet the Marsall. We designated Alyssa and Brian Burch as their contact points. If they have any questions or have any problems, they'll contact them to work through that. The Marsall company will. The CDBG drain project on Mitchell. The addition of the part from Third Street North is gonna delay it just a little bit. I sent out the email with the mention from Brian Schwego from Coen Group that they're having a little bit of trouble getting the pipe, but it should be mid-July when they start that middle part of it. There's a list of the seven building permits from May. Also, have emailed several times and then called the town attorney about the RV sewer dump ordinance and the food truck ordinance. He admits that he's been swamped and hasn't had a chance to get to it like he was wanting to. So I asked what his plans were. He's got the food truck ordinance, was actually on his desk, he said, and he will get on it. And I think he said he's gonna let me know tomorrow if he come up with any problems, but he'd let me know tomorrow what's going on with that. And he's gonna get in touch with Brian a little bit about the sewer. I think you had some stuff from other towns around us that he can... He's gonna pick your brain on that.
I ask you a question about the sewer.
Yeah.
Why can't we just go ahead and open it up and start making money?
Good question.
I mean, I got here where we've already lost about $10,000 month... Or $10,000 so far this year, just with one company that would dump in it. And it's making money before, why couldn't we open it up?
It's not on the agenda.
It wasn't on the agenda to close it. It was a town administrator thing. Yeah.
I thought we voted.
No, we didn't vote on it.
When the grinder went down, we were starting to get stuff that was plugging up the flume down there where the grinder was, so we had to shut it down until we got the grinder back in. And I was told not to open it until the board made a decision on that.
Okay, now, I don't recall everything that was discussed on that, but I believe the town attorney was instructed to come up with an ordinance system rules and regulations. Cause we talked about a jillion things.
Yeah.
About having a card system to open the gate to...
Ideally, it's been closed for almost a year. That's a lot of revenue. I don't know why we can't open it back up with the same rules it was before we closed it.
Well, there's gonna be new rules because we never had a gate lock on it before, so...
We're still not gonna have a gate lock on it. I ain't gonna afford that. We all know it.
Okay. You know, the attorney's almost done with it. He said he's gonna call tomorrow, so...
Well, I was on the food truck.
On the food truck? Oh, I thought it was about the sewer. But yeah, you're right, we are losing money, I agree. But, you know, I wanna make sure that we get it done right and not just...
Bet it's working before we shut it down.
Yeah.
That's what I don't understand.
But this will keep us from having to put another grinder in, or...
We can't say that. You know, that grinder was 13 years old and...
Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
It'd be different if we could actually prove it came from that certain project or that certain area, but we can't do that.
Right.
But I know we're gonna play dumb here and go on, but all right, go.
Okay.
Cliff, I got a question for David, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
David, last month, we got a fairly detailed list of purchase orders. You guys did a report, a run for us, do you remember that? My question is, is do we have that data again for this month's meeting?
I don't know that that's my area.
The reason we had that last month is because we didn't have...
Your computers were down.
The totals. So all we could do is just do a printout.
That was a one-time shot that we're not gonna see in this meeting anymore?
At this time, you're right.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Other scheduled business. A, discuss approved denies a project to take action on the following. A, discussion with possible action to approve Town Hennessy budget for 2023-2024. And then, David, you said you had some questions you wanted to ask.
No, I don't have any.
Okay.
I had some for Ms. Hunt, but she's not here. I can ask her later. I can go ahead and participate in the vote, as I stand now.
Harold. Bert. Randy. I will make a motion to accept the Town of Hennessy budget for 23-24. Second. Roll call, please.
Cliff.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Randy.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Dave.
Yes.
B, discussion with possible action to approve the resolution in 2023 approving the budget.
Is that supposed to be 23-24, I said?
No, there's supposed to be a resolution number, but I don't know what it is and... I don't know how to...
Do you know, Shannon?
I do not.
What the resolution would be? Okay, we will pass on that?
No, I mean, I think we could pass the resolution.
Oh, pass the resolution?
That's presented, and I could put the number in, cause we've got a copy of it.
Okay. I make a motion to... Approve the resolution 2023 approving the budget with a later date of the... Resolution. Number. Second. Roll call, please.
Cliff.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Dave.
Yes.
Harold. Randy.
Yes.
C, discussion with possible action to approve the payment of craft rentals payment number three using the CDBG funds for the amount of $33,041 for the CDBG grant number 185231. You'll find that in your book, in your packet.
Cliff, I got a question for you, sir.
Okay.
If you don't mind, your initials are on this item, so that's why I'm aiming at you, okay?
All right.
This is the project that we have currently going on on Mitchell Road, is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. So this is a progress payment?
Yes, it is.
And we've got major problems over there, is that correct?
Yes, we do.
That's all my questions, sir, thank you.
Can I point out, oh, we do have problems over there. It's totally unrelated to this contract because it was removed from the contract.
I'm sorry, Bert, I can't hear you.
The problem area is not a part of this contract, it was removed. And then last month, we voted to go ahead as a supplement and do that with that area.
Okay, so...
Third Street North to...
Yeah, let me tell you what I'm hearing you say and make sure that I'm understanding you correctly, okay? So this company has already worked out the problems that they've had, and they're gonna work it in a different contract versus the contract that they're working on now?
Well, with the exception, it's not really problems that the company has had. It was a change order that withdrew a portion of the area north of Third Street.
Okay, and that's the problem area?
That is.
And that was an engineering issue?
Yes, I mean, if you look on... Have you got that in front of you?
I do, yes, sir.
Okay, if you look at the top, the original contract sum is $599.525.
Right.
Okay, then you see a net contract change taking out $232,173.
Yes, sir, the parentheses is a negative, I got it.
That was a change order because our grant was not large enough to cover that.
Okay.
So the engineer took out the portion from Third and Mitchell North to... I'm not sure about what would be Second Street if it went through, right in that area. And that's where people have the culverts under their lawn, and it is higher, so therefore it wouldn't drain. So all I wanna do is clarify that the construction company hasn't done anything wrong. They have built it according to plan.
Okay, all right.
And then last, with the last special meeting, we went in to take and voted to take money out of... Out of a restricted sales tax funding to go ahead and complete that area.
I got you.
So once that's done, it'll be complete from Seventh to Oklahoma.
Okay, so, again, I'm hearing you say that actually we do owe them this progress payment.
Correct.
Okay.
Because it's what they've done, yes. And that's why I just wanted to clarify that, because I wasn't...
I appreciate you doing that.
I wasn't sure that...
Yeah, I was heading in a potential negative direction.
Right, right, yeah, and they have done their...
Right, there was three places that they took out to take out this $232,000. That one place right there, then there was a place over on Oklahoma that they took out, and they took out, well, actually two places on Oklahoma, over by, what's his house? Yeah.
A Bell.
A Bell's house. And then also by the corner, there was two... There was three things they took out to get the bid down to where we could do it.
Okay.
And also, I was under the influence that also we could apply for this money to come back.
Well, we can apply for another grant. It won't... The grant would not reimburse the town for these expenditures, but it would... We could apply for another grant to do another project that we would've spent town money on. We can apply to use grant money, so it's just kind of a flip-flop.
Right.
And what we would be funded, if that makes sense.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Is this part, the new work, is that part of the work that is going east of Mitchell Road on Oklahoma Avenue?
This is a portion of that.
Oh, okay, I didn't remember that being... Cause someone had asked if that was the town or the school. Okay, thank you.
I have no more questions on it, Cliff.
Okay.
Thank you, Bert.
I make a motion to approve the payment to K Craft Reynolds payment number three using the CDBG funds for the amount of $33,041 for the CDBG grant number 18523-21.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Cliff.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Dave.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Randy.
Yes.
D, you, discussion with a possible action to approve the purchase of fireworks from Rainbow Fireworks. That's also in your packet.
Bonnie, we're gonna like the town up this year.
David, you're trying.
Cliff?
Yes, sir.
Sir, I got a question for Brian.
That's all right?
Yes, go right ahead. Brian?
Yes, sir.
How long you been doing business with this company?
Since we've started doing fireworks.
Okay. You're happy with the amount, the dollar amount on here?
Yes.
They give you some halfway decent deals, being you're a long-term customer?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
This is around what we spent last year, right?
It's pretty close. Maybe a little bit more than last year. That should be about 30 minutes short.
It looks really good.
What I had to quote.
Cliff, I got one more for Brian.
You bet.
Brian, do you have to go get these, or are they gonna... Is this a delivered price, so they ship them here to us?
I have to go get them.
You gotta go get them?
Yeah.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the purchase of fireworks from Rainbow Fireworks as an amount of $7,497.24.
One second.
Roll call, please.
Harold.
Yes.
Randy.
Yes.
Cliff.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Dave.
Yes.
Discussion with possible action to approve the contract for the school's resources officer.
So every year, we have to redo the contract with school. The contract's basically exactly the same as it has been the previous three or four years, how many years we've done it. The only thing that's changed is the number, the amount per hour they're gonna pay for the officer, because we all make more every year.
So that's, they're gonna pay more than they did.
Yeah, more than they did last year, it's a dollar more, $21 an hour. And that contract, I believe, is through August 1st to May 31st. Any questions?
Have you... I mean, it's obviously the same.
Yeah, everything's...
Everything's worked out well.
Yeah, everything's gone good. The school actually asked me a few weeks ago if we had it ready, ready to go. They're ready to vote on it at their last board meeting.
I make a motion to approve the contract for the school resource officer.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Randy.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Dave.
Yes.
Cliff.
Yes.
Discussion with possible action to hire another full-time police officer. I was talking that and was visiting with Aaron about, you know, having another police officer. We did not, we have not saved enough money from the 911 and not paying the dispatcher, but there's enough money there to make a distance with how much we do have budgeted plus that on our 23-24 budget. So I would like to see that happen. Aaron, would you say what you told me, like you were that on your scheduling?
Okay, so hiring another officer, it helps us where, other than one or two days, we can have double coverage at least part of every shift we work. So instead of one officer working every shift, almost for at least a portion of each shift, there'll be two officers. I can work at either Monday through Friday. I don't, I have to look at it again, but I don't think I can quite make it seven days a week, but I think five or six I could do. Or potentially change the shifts, the shift around a little bit. Anybody got any questions?
You're talking, I got a question, Cliff. You're talking, you still gotta fill the Loper position?
Yeah.
You're talking about another option above that?
And Tammy, I believe, budgeted for that. Anyhow, it was like we talked about the special meeting, it would be, you guys said you couldn't vote on anything, but it would be an additional $18,000 as compared to what we're already spending anyway. Cause she, when she originally budgeted for it, she put a dispatcher as an officer as the pay, so the pay difference for that was about $18,000.
Aaron, have you not filled the position?
From Loper? Tyler Baxter took that position, but it's pending, it's on my report, if you guys saw it, it's at the bottom. He was hired as a part-time or a part-time or reserve police officer until the pension board... The pension board has to approve it first to become a full-time officer, so... That does not take place, I think, until the 21st of this month at their board meeting. So basically, as a reserve status, you can only work so many hours a month, and obviously it's a pay difference for him until he becomes a full-time officer.
And who hired them would be in the same situation?
Yeah, it'd be the same situation. You have to get a pension physically scheduled and then get it, make sure the results are in before the deadline for their monthly meeting, which is a week, I think it's six days before their meeting, the national turn-in. So they have to have the results from the physical then, so that's why it's put us back this much to get him, to get him started full-time.
I make a motion to hire another full-time police officer.
I second that. Roll call, please.
Harold.
Yes.
Cliff.
Yes.
Dave.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Randy.
Yes.
Discussion with possible action to hire another full... Oops, no, we did that one. Whoops. Discussion with possible action to approve the swimming pool lessons agreement. We got back from the lawyer. What it suggests is on private swim lessons to be treated as a town service for hire. The swimmer parent would pay the town for the lesson, and the lifeguard would be responsible for collecting the fee. The town would pay the lifeguard a percentage of the license fee, and that would be the town's insurance would be in place if negligent. This is what he recommended.
Have the lifeguards already started giving lessons? So this would take effect on any future lessons, I'm assuming?
I would imagine.
And how will that be scheduled? I mean, if a parent comes in here and says, "I wanna give my six-year-old swimming lessons", then we all just have to coordinate with the lifeguard to see what times they're available?
My understanding, the lifeguards are cool for the summer, like I don't think...
Oh, they're already... Yeah.
So they would have to just share the schedule with Town Hall to have Town Hall collect the fees, and the lifeguard be paid accordingly?
Okay.
Is that...
I see.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't know that one.
Yeah, but I mean, I have no idea of their schedule, if who they... I mean, that they take care of everything, so...
Well, since they had it already scheduled, what if we made this for 24, so we do this now?
That was the, I was gonna suggest, can we start that for next year to get every lifeguard heads up?
Let's do that.
I think that's a good idea.
Listen, I would like to see that, that since we're halfway through our swim season, let's go ahead and put this for next swim season. That way, that way start out, yeah. And everybody will know what the rule is and how we're gonna do that.
Right. So we're not changing horses in Middle Street.
Right. I would like that.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the swimming lesson agreement effective for the 2024 season.
I second that. Roll call, please.
Randy.
Yes.
Cliff.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Dave.
Discussion with possible action to raise the starting wage of a AP payroll clerk?
Questions?
Go, yes, sir.
Numbers? There's no numbers in the agenda. Now and future? Does that make sense, Cliff?
Yes, sir.
Is that a good question?
I think so.
While he's doing that, Mr. Mayor, could I recommend moving item P before J to allow these folks to clear up?
Okay, P to J?
I think that's okay with you.
Sir, that'd be working.
Yes, starting wage now for that position is twelve dollars an hour.
That's what it is currently?
Yes.
What you propose, David?
I will tell you, we are taking applications, and I've had so many people call me who are qualified, and they won't even consider the job for less than fifteen an hour.
How does that compare to what we're currently paying other than, other than AP? Does that make sense?
Yeah. Let's see, like, street and park laborer, why they start out at thirteen? Class D water is fourteen. The, and then, you know, like the, the pool manager and UB clerk or utility billing clerk is only eleven. Dispatcher librarian was ten fifty. And then you get down into your assistant or your part-timers.
We have like an office manager?
We do. This is perfect.
To what that would be, what would it pair with?
To start out, it'd be fourteen fifty, but she's been here for three or four years. She's up to nineteen right now.
So the office manager position starts at?
Start at fourteen fifty.
Fourteen fifty. So we can hardly bring a clerical person in at fifteen over where an office manager would start.
Unless you.
Shift the entire.
But ultimately, increase everybody.
I feel like the whole thing needs to revamp.
Yeah, I do too, honestly.
I mean, I, I don't feel like just picking one position because it's empty and adding to that is gonna fix the problem. That's just gonna kick the can.
Then we bring a new town manager in, would the office manager state the same?
I would say.
That's the title of the office manager.
I don't think, has that changed since we've all started?
I mean, when do we start getting an office manager?
Shelly was promoted right before Tiffany left because she had given her so much more work to do that it was deemed necessary. And when they needed, you know, they need somebody in here that, since there's no town administrator with any experience, they need somebody with some experience to do the, help manage the, just the day-to-day stuff in the office. And besides all the work that she was piled upon.
You mean, would that be about an office manager?
No, we had Tiffany to do everything.
And now we're paying the price.
Yes, we are.
Both figuratively and literally.
My deal is, to me, that whole payroll system, all through the, the system needs to be revamped.
Yep.
You know, we got these guys out there working in the heat and the cold, less than wages, you know? We give this person that kind of rate, you think they would want that kind of rate?
Right.
I think we should ought to table it and discuss the possibility of maybe revamping the whole system.
What if we, because we're currently taking applications for an AP payroll clerk, and it's a position we desperately need to fill. I don't know how often the rest of you all come into this office, but they're covered up. And if you drive by here at night, you're gonna see cars back here because they're working at night. I would like to see us go ahead and make a move on an AP payroll clerk, with the understanding that the next meeting, we will address all of the other, and only because we're now taking applications for that position. I don't wanna lose somebody by tabling it for a month when we can go in and look at, at the entire, cause I totally agree with you guys. I feel like it needs, the whole thing needs to be.
What's your other, what's your other clerk making? I mean, would she be making less than the one we're hiring?
Yeah.
No, one hundred and twelve.
But that would be something we'd look at, you know, when we bring up the entire.
What, and what's her title?
That's, that's questionable right now. Nobody really has titles. They're doing more than one, one job. They'd, they'd like to get back to having the three people in the office so they can divide everything up more evenly, and as well as the administrator position. So she's, she's kinda doing several different things that we really don't have a heading for.
But she, are we bringing Katie in to help do payroll?
Katie helps with payroll, UB, utility billing, accounts payable, account receiving, yeah, everything.
I haven't done payroll, but I have been bouncing some stuff off of Katie, yes.
All right, question, is it fair to her or is somebody in order, in her?
Well, I need training. We still haven't received the training in this office.
But besides that, it's really not. But if you guys are going to, you know, if the, the decision is to go ahead and set a pay, beginning pay scale for the, for the position we're hiring for, with the understanding that you're gonna revamp everything, I don't see why that would be a big problem. As long as we're gonna take care of the one coming in that we need to, we're gonna take our applications and, and we're gonna, we have interviews Friday, and that's, that's gonna be one of the first questions.
Right, it is.
Cliff, I have a comment. I totally agree with Randy, Harold, and Bert on the subject at hand. However, I don't wanna wait till the next meeting that we have to see the data. I wanna be able to see our pay scale, where I can study it, think about it, and come up with some suggestions long before our next meeting.
Right.
I do not wanna get that as an attachment at the last minute, the day before our next meeting, and then I gotta try to digest all that. So I'm asking, David, I'm asking, send that information out to us or give it to us in hard copy.
Give us about one minute.
Bang, 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 bang. We all get the information, and it's all legal, legal in that, in that form. As long as we all get the stuff. Am I right or am I wrong?
You're right.
Yeah, for sure. All right. I, I totally agree with all three of you guys, what you said. And I will have inputs.
So what you suggested, we move the payroll clerk up to?
Sorry, what?
What are you suggesting, that we bring the AP payroll clerk up to?
That's up to you guys. I'm just telling you, I've had two people with experience, and when I told them this, what it starts out with, they're like, no. One of them told me she couldn't start for less than fifteen, and one of them told me she couldn't come for less than eighteen. And they had experience.
David, how long has this pay scale been in effect?
A year.
Yeah.
One year?
A year.
One year? So in other words, this pay scale is the result of our last cost of living raise? Okay, so.
Yeah, there's nine, eight, twenty-two.
Nine, eight, twenty-two. Okay, yeah, I see that down at the bottom now. Okay. Thanks, Avery. I will chew on this and probably have several recommendations.
I'm saying partly, we not hire with the ability of what knowledge the people have?
He said, can we hire for the knowledge that they have? You know, instead of.
Yeah. The hiring will be up to the town administrator, in this case, interim town administrator, and he will, I mean.
Why I'm asking though is, you get somebody that's been doing this stuff for a while, why would you hire a level entry position?
Oh, why wouldn't you move up to step two or three? Is that what you're saying? Paid accordingly to experience. Well?
What, what if the board gave the town administrator the latitude to move up so many steps based on experience? In other words, we could say, you got the latitude to move up through step three or four, whatever you all think's proper, based on the person's experience.
Until we can get the opportunity to revamp?
Yes.
Okay, that's my deal. If you get a girl that's been sacking groceries to fourteen, and she's making ten dollars an hour, or you get a girl that's been doing this for ten years already, why would you, how would you pay her the same amount a month?
Right, I understand. You're right.
Yeah.
How do you put that in a motion?
Well, I'm making a motion that she wanted.
I don't think you'd ask her, because that'd be after a town administrator.
Well, I think.
Take whatever.
The only thing, Harold, the board set this, this step raise as policy. So I, I don't think the town administrator could just inadvertently give, go, skip steps without guidance from us, if that makes sense. But I agree. I think people should be, I think the more experienced and the more, and references are important and.
How, how would you do that on the pay scale? So this, up to ten steps on this pay scale, looking at it, you jump somebody to pay scale four, and they top out at ten still, or is that increase another, you know what I mean?
Right now, we're looking at the AP clerk. We're gonna readjust this at a later date for all.
Yeah, no, I'm saying, I'm saying, what, if you, if you jump somebody based on experience, say that you're four, say that you, four or five, whatever it is, that pay scale set for, they set up for ten years.
Right.
So you're gonna readjust that for three percent each year after that? You get what I'm saying? So, okay.
But even if we allowed you to go clear to step ten, we're fourteen fifty-seven. I mean.
I have told people to put on their application, what do you want? What will, what would it take for you to come because then at least we would know what to expect? And I had one of them, she was like, I'm not even gonna fill out the application just because they're not gonna pay that much. So we gotta set, I mean, we, we gotta get people here. We gotta, we have to have somebody who knows what they're doing in AP. Bottom line. We are, we just have to, I can't stress it enough. We need somebody who knows what they're doing and somebody who is confident in what they're doing, doing it. And it's a very important part of the office.
The one thing I'm looking here that I didn't see before, under level four, we've got AP clerk, court clerk, UB clerk, pool manager. Five, we've got communications, AP slash payroll clerk. Which is technically is that what this position would entail? So it would actually.
Step nine.
Step nine would go to fifteen thirty-seven, eight at fourteen ninety-three.
See, my, my deal is, how far jump did you take when you took office manager? In your deal? Did you go up in service?
Yeah.
So town administrator took that right, our own, so David would be able to.
But I also took on a lot of more stuff.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah, I think, well, and Harold, I think he could if we were moving downward on this side of the chart, where if we had somebody that, well, for instance, a librarian, and we wanted to bring them up here and, or they, let's say they wanted to go to the water department and get class C water license, then that would move their position into a higher rate of pay. But I think we do, I, I totally agree that this whole, this whole thing needs to be looked at.
Well, from what I'm seeing.
We gotta have quality people. We gotta pay them.
From what I'm, from what I'm seeing, Bert, we've fallen behind a large majority of the industries out there in the private realm of the employment. So Shelley's right. Everything we've said here is correct. We need, we need to work this. Something that I'm specifically interested in is the certifications.
Like on this, so if I make a motion to move the payroll clerk up to fifteen dollars an hour, or fifteen thirty-seven an hour, that'd be step nine on the payroll deal there at the entry level with the experience? Would that be what we're looking for?
At the discretion of the town administrator?
Yes.
I agree.
That's what we're looking at.
What did I just say? So I grant them?
Instant replay.
So I make a motion to move the payroll clerk up to fifteen thirty-seven to discretion of the town administrator on experience.
I second that. Roll call, please.
Harold.
Yes.
Cliff.
Yes.
Randy.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Dave.
Yes.
Jack. Jack, did you say J? J?
Yes.
Oh, one more.
Drop.
Yeah, there's one.
I. I? Do one more, okay. Oh, yeah, do I. Do I? Okay. Discussion with possible action to declare three oh two East Kansas a nuisance?
Cliff, I have questions on this one. I, I need somebody, David, I'm thinking you, cause I know you're the, you're the coach guy or have been in the past.
Thank you.
Once, once we declare, this may be the answer to my question.
You'd be the one to talk about this.
When we declare a residence a nuisance, what does that accomplish?
It gives me leverage to work with the property owner. Like right now, the roof's caving in on the porch. I keep police barricade tape around it to keep the neighborhood children from playing around it. And right now, it's got sheeting and roofing that's got the falling, that's deteriorating. The house is set empty since two thousand and seven, and he's made no improvements to it.
Does the owner live here at his?
He lives in Kingfisher. It's Donald Cox.
Okay. Interesting. I appreciate this, I appreciate this right here. This is a full explanation, is that right?
Perfect. Yes, sir.
I'm not poking any, I'm not poking you in the eye, but I'd rather get this document before we meet.
Yeah.
At all possible.
There's a lot of information and pictures.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. I'll study up on this. We're getting ready to vote on this, huh, Cliff?
Yes, sir. What, okay, are you done, Dave?
Yes, sir, for now, I am, anyway.
I got a question. And correct me where I'm wrong, because it's been a long time since we've done one of these. Is, isn't there a public hearing process to go through?
Yes.
Is that prior to us doing this, or does that follow?
If you deem it a public nuisance, it gives me room to work with him, and he needs to make improvements in thirty to sixty days. Normally, you give him a little bit of time to, to show their interest in improving the property, but he's, he's not even maintaining it.
Okay, so what is the step? The next step beyond that, let's say we vote tonight to declare a public nuisance.
I will get with him.
Okay, and what if he's, what if nothing's done in sixty days?
Then you get bids for demolition. The house can be demolished.
And that may be where we have to go.
Further on down the line, and then he has sixty days to pay that, or he gets put on his tax roll at the treasurer's office.
Right, okay.
And if he doesn't pay that, it goes. And if he doesn't pay that, it goes to sheriff's auction, and that's how we get our money back.
Okay. Okay, that's what I was gonna ask.
We have, we have.
Yes.
I was gonna ask, since it's still liquid on back taxes, why has it not already gone to?
He's current, current taxes.
Oh, he's current?
He is.
Oh, okay, sure. That's why we have to run to sheriff's.
But he says there's a title problem, he's got somebody on there that's at Allmings and Associates, and supposedly, the person that sold him the house also sold it to Charles Greenfield.
Six fifty PM.
So, and he says Charles Greenfield will not work with him.
Will what?
Charles Greenfield won't cooperate with him, and he's on the title also under the and Associates.
Is it, so the property is in more than one night?
It says Don Cox and Associates.
And Associates. At all?
Uh huh. And he was telling me that in the past, he's had problems, because he, he has, he doesn't wanna put money into it, because he can't get a clear title.
Does he buy it in a partnership, or you know?
Um, he thinks he was manipulated or ripped off by the person that sold it to him, like she sold it to multiple people.
Oh, like a civil matter.
That's why he's very hesitant to put any money into it.
Cliff, I got another question for Tony. Okay? Tony, I, the last thing I want you to think is that I'm second guessing you, okay? I am not doing that. I, I have no training or education on town codes, other than my own readings, since I got elected in our code manual. I'm, I'm gonna tell you, being this was on the agenda, I went over there today and looked at that place, and I totally agree with everything you're saying, and everything you got in your letter. Okay, here comes the however comma. There's a lot of other properties in town that are in really, really, really bad shape. And that's as far as I'll go on that, I'm not gonna identify any of them, because that's, that's your job. But I am concerned, I am concerned personally about my own property values based on other properties within a very short distance around my house. And I do not, you know, I wanna make sure that you, you have a mindset of treating everybody the same.
Yes.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to hear that from you, man, okay?
I'm trying to make it look better, one property at a time.
Okay, well, I, I, I thank you very much, as, as a citizen, not just a trustee, okay? I really appreciate that, and, uh, you know, I'll help you any way I can, and I know these guys will too, so keep up the good work. That's all I got, Cliff.
Okay. I make a motion to declare three oh two East Kansas a nuisance.
Bert first.
Bert? Real call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
So, we need, you set up after aye to go down to, uh.
P.
P. We're, uh, on a request, we're gonna go down here to, uh, P. Discussion with possible action to spray and mow the soccer field more often?
We got a group of young men sitting here in the audience. They, uh, play a lot of soccer down there at Oklahoma and Cemetery Road, and they asked me if we could take maybe better care of the soccer field down there, maybe spray it, get rid of the stickers, mow it a little bit better. Uh, yeah, I sense it involving a little bit of money for the town to go down there and spray that area, you know, uh, really, the west side's kids really don't got nowhere to play but that area, you know? We got a little park for them on our appo. Yeah, if you go down there, usually on thirty-nines, there's about thirty of them down there playing. You know, they're usually there two or three times a week. A dad actually mows the actual soccer field himself. So, you know, and I know we try to maintain it, we're busy, you know? Like I said, I'm just gonna ask to see if we could, uh, maybe take better care of it, give them a place to play. Soccer's getting more important, you know, Ennis built a big soccer field, Kingfisher's got one, El Reno's got one. That's the only place that we got here in town really for them to play soccer, you know?
Did the town, did the town take down the goals, or?
No, they're, they're still up.
They're.
The only, only thing that we took down, we took down.
The baseball.
The back porch.
Yeah, the backstop.
Backstop.
And I, and I'm not saying that the town has done anything wrong, it's just these kids have taken advantage of the place that we allow them to play, and I'd like for it, you know, to see if we couldn't do better for them, have a place to play, you know? I know, you say east side, west side, whatever you wanna say, east side's got a lot of places for them to go, we love, there's a lot of kids on the west side.
Is it level enough?
Oh, yeah.
It's level enough for y'all to play. It's sort of level, I mean, we, we try to play where, you know, where we can. Uh, as you can see, we have plenty of guests here, I mean, there's more that, we play every Tuesdays and Thursdays around seven, and, uh, like you mentioned, y'all, uh, we brush hog a field ourselves, and when we can, I know you guys do it every now and then, but, that's something that, you know, these young kids, like, they, not everyone likes to play football, basketball, those sports here, we have a, you know, a young community, Hispanic community, and a lot of them like to play, you know, soccer, so that's where we've been playing now, every Tuesday and Thursday, so.
We've got the equipment to spray it, don't we?
Yeah, yeah. I, I'm, I have a little question.
Yeah.
Was it maintained okay last year, or, 'cause this year's been kind of exceptional, it's been a while.
Yeah, it's been.
Was last year, uh, uh, okay, or does it need, which is talking, but which is compared to last year, if that's okay?
Uh, it's definitely gone better, but I mean, there's still parts on the field where, you know, it's not level.
So, so talk about last year's maintenance needs to be a little bit better than last year.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Okay. You know, uh, Jack probably might bring it up here in a little bit, but there has been some business in the community that said they would even donate money to that, you know, to help us, you know, make it a little bit better for them. Uh, you know, like I said, there's five little league soccer teams.
Really?
Here in town right now, that belong into, uh, you know, leagues and innit, you know? But they have to go to innit, or, you know, they have to practice on school property or whatever, and this is their fields, you know, they, they'd like, you know, it's kinda like, you know, build a field and they'll come and play.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's the reason I asked about if we could spend a little bit of money towards fixing it, you know, spraying it, 'cause I know it's a big area, uh, but I mean, it's probably a lot of stickers, you know?
I have a suggestion on that spraying, it'd probably save us some money, with, you know, not trying to overstep nobody, but getting a CHS, and have them take their big boom sprayer down, and spray it for stickers. Could you do that?
Huh?
He's behind.
They probably could, we'd probably need to put up a sign saying, you know, we sprayed, you stay out of it, right?
Yeah.
For them not knowing that's being done.
Sure, yeah.
Any of them, no one.
Yeah, maybe get you, get us cost, what it costs to spray that.
Yeah, or I can do it for a little bit or two, or something like that.
Yeah, 'cause it's, you know, we're talking about here, yeah.
I go that way anyways, to spray it, mow it, or anything, so.
And David, I got a question for you as well. When we're, we obviously mow the parks a little bit better with different equipment, could we mow their actually, their actual playing surface when we mow the parks? So, it's not brush hog, I mean, we could brush hog the rest of the area.
Or use a green tractor, that's.
Usually, I use a finishing mower.
Yeah, it's got a little bit better mower than, than brush hog.
To mow that, but when it rains, the rain we've been getting, it's gotta wait from us, and now we're gonna have to brush hog it, get it knocked down, because a finishing mower ain't gonna do that.
But, yeah, if you guys could mark that.
Yeah.
After we brush hog it.
Yeah.
We can, we can groom it, sure.
Is there anything we can do to help level it?
I mean, I know the bigger fish are, I've had some older to them, probably, I guess there's soccer leagues also, and they have big tournaments, and they actually play for money.
Prize money.
And they, yes, they would even like to have, uh, games here, you know, but they'd also like, you know, they would want us to put more than one field there. You know, so it's not just, you know, it's something that, you know, that's been a high sore for Hennessy for fifty years, ever since we closed it down. It'd be nice to see these kids.
Well, yeah, that's why I asked if it was level enough, and maybe, and I totally agree with you, Harold, maybe, what if we concentrate on getting one field ready this year, and then prior to next spring, go in and get a level area and get it sprayed with pre-emergent and stuff, the.
'Cause we even got dirt, we got, we even got dirt that we could put on there and level that field out for me better.
Well, it's just like, I don't know where they're taking the dirt from the first.
We don't, we don't really have the equipment for leveling, though, we'd have to have somebody.
But I've talked to the county guys, and the county guys, they'd be more than glad to come in here and level that out for us.
Greger.
Yeah, that's a little bit.
That'd be good.
I think it's a great idea.
And I wanna say, I was not aware of the soccer, but I, so I'm really glad that you guys came in and said this. I wish we'd either came in in old suitors, because, but I'm glad you came in now and made us aware of what's going on, and because we, that's what we need, we need to make sure that the young people have a, a safe place to be, and soccer, like you said, is growing big time, so.
Anyway, it sounds like guys that will try to do something. I appreciate all you guys showing up.
So do I do, I really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
Hey, guys, can I get your names before you?
Yeah.
She wants to apply to be a cheerleader.
By the way, they play at nine, headlights.
Yeah. The game's not good, it's that tight, it's not a light, it's not far.
Are you kidding?
Okay. Did you play soccer? Oh, darn, okay. Same as long chip, one more can do nothing.
I did a little, you like this?
G O N C A L S.
We went to the air.
Thank you.
We've got some space, might as well utilize one. Thank you, guys.
Are any of these got your kids? Wouldn't you have any kids here? Ah ha, okay.
But for twenty-five, twenty-five minutes, that's, well, it didn't, he had.
Wistole fifty thousand dollars. What Wistole?
Yeah, we played, we played there, he put a basketball.
Who wanted to invest, told us to pay fifty thousand dollars?
Well, that's gonna wanna be half court.
These signs, I'm like, oh, I can't read that.
Did you use the rip bar, or did you use the?
Oh, yeah.
Fiber?
That's what they, they spray holes and pass them off.
Yeah.
Four inch.
Right.
Thank you.
We used to have one at the boys' camp.
Thanks a lot, yeah, take care.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Uh, we'll go back up to Jay, discussion with possible action to discover Hennessy items presented by Jack Work, and a separate vote on each item. A, downtown pavilion, B, street lighting on Oklahoma, C, park signage, D, curb cleanup, E, drill sidewalks for flags. Jack?
Okay, so this is a three-hour presentation, I'm gonna do it in five minutes, 'cause the storm's coming.
It is?
Yeah, our storm's coming. Chasing storms, probably. Okay, so, this is the, I guess, a year's worth of work to get to this, where we are right now. Tonight, we're gonna talk about, these are all the projects that I've identified that we need to look at, or, you know, pay attention to, but tonight, we're gonna focus on these. So, the pavilion, local street lighting, park signage, curb cleanup, drill sidewalks, and banner frames. So, pavilion first, this is the pavilion that we all want, okay? But, that's half a million plus kind of a pavilion. So, tonight, we're gonna talk about, um, one we can do in steps that's much more manageable. Uh, the box I drew, this is the actual site, um, that ways north. That's about where the pavilion would be placed, if you decided to do such. We, pardon my beautiful architectural drawings, but, um, phase one would essentially be a roof on legs, okay? It would be fifty by one hundred, it would be constructed out of brand new steel, no leftovers, no nothing, this is all brand new, and it's built to, built on to, to, to continue the process. So, there, this would be phase one, this would be an example of phase two, where we could put, uh, shed, uh, doggers on it, twenty-five or thirty-five feet extra, get it, with a finished size at around a hundred by a hundred, okay? This is an example, this is one I found in Colorado, um, where this one's been, all made out of wood, but a similar size, and this is, they opted not to put, not to close it in, but we could do so later if we felt necessary. So, the breakdown is, initially, phase one would be a fifty by one hundred steel covered space with, built with new materials, we completed in several stations, stages, this is proposal for phase one. I have worked for a year to get the donations to get this thing affordable for the town. And those donations are, one half of the land would be donated by Richard Siminak, the building would be constructed by Hennessy Metal Buildings in exchange for naming rights, dirt to elevate the building site donated by Lionel Sand construction, and the land cleanup would be done by town employees. I guess we now have the equipment to do such a thing. So, um, sorry, not looking for more work for you, but, you know. Okay, so, these are the donations I have committed. Hennessy Metal Buildings is gonna donate thirty thousand dollars in labor to erect a brand new building for us. Richard Siminak is donating land that we estimate the value of around fifty thousand dollars. The, uh, Lionel Construction has committed to ten thousand dollars worth of filled dirt to get the, to elevate it, but that lot is dead flat, there's no drain, it doesn't do anything, it just lays there, and we need to elevate it about sixteen inches.
Sixteen?
Sixteen. And, so, the dirt he has given us will do the one hundred by one hundred and a little more, okay? And then eventually, we'll have to continue to elevate, um, you know, elevate the rest of the property, but for now, that's what this is. So, total donations are ninety thousand dollars, okay? The building parts to buy the brand new building structure is forty-four thousand dollars, and, and the caveat on that is, the town would have to actually break the check for that, therefore, it would be tax exempt, we wouldn't have to pay taxes on it, okay?
So, that's basically a house sale?
Yes. Yeah, it's what, what they would go buy the building for if, you know, and then they would mark it up, whatever. And then the twelve concrete piers, Buddy gave me a bid of about fifty-nine hundred dollars to, to do that. So, very quickly, I'll tell you that I, I did all the research on the old buildings that we have down at the, at the dome, or at the, uh, wastewater facility. To get them up, to buy the parts that are missing and bent, and get them sandblasted, and getting them painted, and then moving them in, and hope we have all the pieces, and buying out some bolts, almost came to what we can buy a brand new building for now. So, it was just like, ugh. So, that's my first thing I'm asking you to consider. So, the total cost to build a pavilion, in a rough form, would be forty-nine. would be forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars.
And so we roughly would have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar building?
Yeah.
For fifty?
For fifty. Yep. Okay, any questions on this part?
Question?
Yes, please.
Building parts, forty-four thousand dollars. Is that coming from Mueller?
Yes, it is.
Across, down in El Reno?
Yes. And the reason it's coming from Mueller is that Duchendorf, that's donating an enormous amount of money, does a huge amount of business with them, and they get additional, uh, discounts and things like that.
Yeah, I, I was, I was hoping that was the answer.
And this is a, this is a Gerder building. This is not a, uh, those two buildings that are real popular now. This is, this is a real structure.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you. My building I put up is from Mueller and, and highly, I highly recommend it.
How's Richard gonna feel about somebody else having naming rights?
He's already said that's a great idea.
Really?
Yeah, it really is. We're, we're, I'm planning on a plaque when we're done with this, and I think we should probably consider Richard on there, you know, or whatever. But in reality, he started this thing like a hundred years ago.
Yes, of course he did, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay. Uh, additional phases to the building would be to, uh, as private or town funds became available, they would include the twenty-five foot shed extensions on each side, the structure, increasing the structure to a hundred by a hundred, adding a concrete floor, adding electrical, adding sides, HVAC, kitchen, bathroom addition, and park-like features, like in that photo picture I showed you, kind of thing. Long-term project, but this is the start, okay? All right, any questions on that part? Okay, Oakland Street lighting. This has become really popular, uh, in communities, and lighting like this is kind of like a moth to the, to the flame, you know? The, this is a very attractive way to get people into town, get interested, and it, it kind of raises the, the look, if you would. Um, the proposed area, put, this is on Oklahoma Street, on, on West Oklahoma, um, between Main and the alley. Um, the, my proposal is to attach the lights to the two buildings, the Mises Building and Stacy Klein's Building. Um, there was some concern about attaching public property to personal buildings, and I just got word today that, uh, so Plan B would be to set poles. And we got word today that OGN A will not allow poles within ten feet of their wires, which are on both sides of the street, and those poles are within, but we, we couldn't erect poles there. So we'd have to get creative on how to attach these. The Stacy Klein has already said, you bet, storm on the building. Um, the Mises Building, I understand, is in transition, and he can't commit at this point, but, um, I think if I had, if you said that, let's go, let's, let's at least give it a shot, I think that might happen, okay? Next page. All right, so that's pretty much what I just described. These would be RGB lights, meaning, um, they will change color. They can be red and green or whatever in the, at Christmas time. They can be white in the summertime. They can dance. They can move to music. They can be operated by an app. They can be, they can have a, a, a light sensor on them that will turn them off. You know, if you left them on at night just for aesthetics, they would turn off at sunrise, things like that. So the cost, the bid I got from farmers to do this was thirteen thousand ninety-three dollars. Any questions on that? This is easy. Okay, park signage. Right now, only one park actually has a sign on it. Well, I guess Pat Hennessy, I mean, the Pat Hennessy does also, but, um, so getting back to the brand, the brand look that we've established for the town with the new signage, um, this is what I would like to propose. So all the signs will have the town branding on them. Bullfoot Park requires a special sign because it is a federally funded park and because of the trail. And so it would have to have that additional information on it. But the others could look like the one I'm proposing for Memorial, okay? Then we have a part of this is banner frames. And it seems like anytime we have an event, someone goes and buys a banner and puts T-posts in the ground, and the wind blows it, and it rips it apart and everything. And this has become a real cool thing to do for communities, and it's not that expensive. I made a, a crude one that's at Eva Propane's corner right now. I just made it out of fence pipe, but it's kind of crooked and it's kind of funky looking. What this would be, would be a steel frame with mesh behind the banner, so there's lots of place to attach it to, and then the wind doesn't beat it up. And then my long-term plan would be when there's not a, um, when there's not a sign on it, we could put the town logo back there, you know, on, over the mesh, and then the banner would just cover that up when we're using for banners. I'm proposing three of these. One would go somewhere like around Bullfoot Park. One would go in Memorial Park, and one would go on Jimmy Burkeby's corner, okay? Any questions on that?
How big would that be?
That is thirteen by six. So a ten by five banner would fit nicely on it.
Yeah, if you put it at the park on Main Street, where would you put that?
I don't know yet. I don't know yet. They would be, um, aesthetically nice, I think, rather than T-posts and, you know, the stuff we're doing now. And each one would have a little, a little sign on the back stating, this is property of the Town of Hennessy. Do not post here without permission, kind of a thing. So, um, in fact, the one on Jimmy's corner, um, people are calling me all the time. They said, okay, if I put my banner on your thing? And if it's a politician, no. If it's an event, absolutely. So several people have been using it, okay? All right, um, so this is just talking about the, I originally had four signs for the parks planned, Boy Scouts, Memorial, Bullfoot, and Pat Hennessy. But I believe, I think the ones that needed the most right now are Bullfoot and Memorial, and we can add to this later. But the cost for two, four by eight signs, this is from, uh, Royal Signs, is fifty-eight hundred dollars for the two signs, two thousand for installation, and a total of seventy-eight hundred dollars for two nice park signs. And then the banner frames, if you chose three of those, would be a total of thirty-seven seventeen.
Would those be square tubing or?
Yeah, those, so it'll be, uh, I think they're, um, four by four, light gauge, steel, embedded in concrete, so they're not, you know, tipping over and stuff. And then at the top, runners are three by three, and then it would be a...
It'd be powder coated or anything?
It'd be painted. Yeah, they're gonna be too big to powder coat, but they would be painted, primed and painted. And then the, um, the wire mesh is a, um, if you can envision a tight hog wire, kind of, you know, it's like three by three squares. It's a heavier gauge than just, you know, like fence wire kind of a thing. So it would stand up to pull the zip ties on it and stuff like that, okay? Um, all right, any questions on that part? All right, curb cleanup. Um, this is, this has been a problem for a really long time. This is, um, especially right here. This one is right next to Loves, just south of Loves, and the owner of this just told me that this is, is just too dangerous for him to mow. He's, he's a senior. He's out there with weed whacker. The truck's going by. It's just scary. Um, and this is, this one up here is at the bank. I hope there doesn't point up there. Right there. Uh, the top corner is the bank, but this is a problem from Conoco Road to fifty-one eighty-one and then all the way over to Old Motel. The, the dirt has just continually, you know, just splashed up and it just keeps building, and the owners just can't do it anywhere. So my proposal is to, um, scrape all the curbs in a perfect world, uh, about seven feet back to allow enough grade that a lawnmower could tip over. So it's a nice shallow deal to the top of the curb. Um, this year would have been a perfect time to do it because we've had rain and it'll get the grass growing again. Um, so I, I got two bids. One was with Grade Works, which is now a different company, I believe, um, for forty thousand, and that's to do all of it. That's just the whole thing. Haul off the dirt, scrape it, everything. And then Oakie-Hauling gave me a bid of thirty-eight five. But my suggestion would be, and I even have a third suggestion here in a minute. My suggestion would be to commit to about three thousand a month for three months, and let me pay them by the hour and see how far we can get. You know, we, we do the worst ones first, and then some of them we could let slide a little bit more rather than just doing the whole town. And then I was talking with, um, Representative Dubrinsky yesterday in Kingfisher, and he's, he's on the ODOT committee. And I, before you commit to this one, I would like to visit with him about some help. I did reach out to ODOT and they kind of laughed and said, well, that's your problem. And, um, I actually talked to the county about, could you help us? And I was told that they're not insured to work on state property, um, so they, where they couldn't help us with this. So, um, this is just an option. Probably don't even want you to vote on this one yet, but this is kind of, I see a sore spot.
Do these, do these prices include re-sodding?
No, it doesn't. No. Um, so what would probably have to happen here is we'd have to probably seed it and have, have a fire truck run up and down a couple times a week and, you know, with the, the truck you have with the spray thing. Or we table the whole thing and figure out how much sod costs. So, um, I don't cameras.
And that's gonna be, that's gonna be harder frequently.
Yeah, it's gonna be harder.
Especially if it's...
It's gonna be harder every day. Yeah. So I just, I identified this as a real sore spot, and it's dangerous, you know, for people trying to mow it, but, okay.
Have you talked to people like Larry Beal?
I did. And he said, please, please help. He doesn't know what to do with it. He has no way to do it on his own.
Okay, I know Larry. He's like seventy-five years old and...
Yep, yep.
And when people go on forty-five miles an hour and you're this close to them, it's not very fun.
Yes, sir.
The question I have is, uh, we have a skid steer. Why can't our guys do the work?
I'm assuming they could. Yeah.
Could we do it, sorry, could our people do it? A lot cheaper than that with our own skid steer and our own fuel and we got a place to put the dirt?
Oakie-Hauling has a pretty similar skid steer to what the town owns. You know, it's just a matter of how much more you want, you know, you can afford to have them doing these things. But once again, it could be one of those, hey, let's run over, do this one for a couple hours and do water weeks later or whatever. I don't, I don't know.
So that is state property. It's not the landowner's property?
It is state, it is, it is state right away. And I was told that they don't want to have anything to do with it. It's your problem. And we went through the same thing with the sidewalks. We had some sidewalk issues, and the state said, yeah, we built them, you won't.
Yeah. What do you guys think? Would it, would it be a liability for our people to do that with a skid steer? I wouldn't. I mean, it's... I mean, he's already asked the state. They've already said not interested. We ran into an issue with the state one time on a project down on fifty-one. They said, we're not fixing it, but we're not allowing you to fix it either. I hope we don't get into something like that.
Yeah.
Why is that not a surprise?
Well, that's why I want, I want to talk to, uh, Mike Dubrinsky before we really jump into this, because I wasn't convinced by the guy. I interrupted him. He was doing something. He was mad. And, you know, kind of just blew me off, but I did verify later from someone that, yeah, it's, it's our property, but we're not gonna fix it, so.
David, what do you think about, what do you think about our guys doing that?
Well, I'm not really sure what he's talking about, scraping it away from the curb. I mean, down, down, down.
Get it down to curb level.
And just keep it level?
It's seven feet.
I thought you was talking about angling it.
Oh, well, I mean, yeah, some of it is like this, too much high. So we would, we couldn't just like cut it off and have a, a drop. It would just, it would just have a taper from the highest part to the curb.
Going, they going away from, toward the road?
Correct. About the width, about the width, about the width of the blade. Yeah, about a width of the blade.
Where they gonna stop?
I don't know. I mean, uh...
It'd almost be, where we would be to road grader, so you could angle that blade?
Well, that's what I was hoping, that maybe the county, it would take the county one day to do it. I mean, they just run down the streets, drag it in the street, pick it up with their bucket loader and haul it off.
Did you talk to Ralph?
Ray Allen.
He said he couldn't do it. Yep, state property. Now, the town could rent a grader.
Yes.
I mean, uh, King Rinkle has a little one. They have, have a big one and a little one. That would be an opportunity. So I think at this point, guys, we should just, we should, who can run it? Can you run a grader?
If the county can't do it, we probably can't.
Right, I was just gonna say.
You know what I'm saying is if the county considers it illegal for them to do it, it should be illegal for us to do it.
No, the county didn't say it was illegal. It said they weren't insured.
Yeah, they weren't insured.
They're not insured to work on state property.
We probably aren't either then. That'd be something we need to check with Al Mag.
Yep.
But my understanding is it's kind of like storm drains up and down Main Street. The state put them in. You'd think it would be a state problem. They're telling us, we own them. It's our problem. We have to maintain them. We got, we got storm drains and full of dirt and curbs, so.
Well, we used to, we used to do something like that. We used to edge them streets.
Yeah, now it's beyond edging them. Yeah, now it's, some of them are two feet tall.
But, I mean, what I'm saying is we used to edge them streets. You think that would...
Oh, I see what you're saying. They're still working on that.
On that property. There was no way. Something like, if you could edge it and take dirt away, why that would be any different, you know? Because then they'd come behind and sweep it all up, you know?
Okay, this one probably needs more discussion, but let's move on. There are, there is severe weather approaching. All right, uh, flags, drill sidewalks. I've been wanting to do this for like ever, and I, the Lions Club stepped up today and said, hey, look, if we can get the sidewalks drilled, build by flags, American flags, and like line Main Street with them during events and things like this. So what this would entail is this is, this is another job for Brian and his guys, but, I mean, it's, it's really as simple as, there's two ways to do it. The one way is to simply drill a hole in the concrete, whatever, just the bottom of the concrete, and stick the poles in it. The, a little bit better way would be to drill a little bit bigger hole and put a sleeve in it. I'd kind of like to see the sleeve part, but either way, it's a very simple, you have a hammer drill and get a big drill bit for it, but, um...
Do they make the sleeves when there's not a pole in it that has a cap to over it?
I have seen them.
Don't fill up with dirt?
Yeah, I have seen them. Yeah, we'll give everybody a long spoon. They have to scoop them out every year. But, um, this is a project that, that town can do on their own. It's just, I need a little make that go kind of a thing.
If you would allow me to regress back about fifty years?
Oh, geez.
There were, the sidewalks were drilled at that time, and they put flags out. And it was wonderful. And the Boy Scouts did it as a fundraiser, because they go to the businesses and say, for twelve dollars a year, we're gonna put your flag out twelve times.
And that's exactly what the Lions Club proposed today.
And, uh, but back to the caps, one of the problems was as the merchants sweep the sidewalks, the dirt goes down there, it rains, it gets hard. So I really think an insert cap would be, and it would be nothing but a smaller piece of pipe with a little flat piece of metal welded on it to drop in those holes. I think it would, I think it would be, I think it'd be great, as long as I get the power lines to the streetlights march, so we don't, I don't want like bony up.
Yeah.
Make that drill run a little faster than it was.
Are you raising your hand or exercising? Okay, good. All right, anyway, um, I mean, this is something that David and I and the crewers can work on. Uh, I just really want to make you aware of. This is a no-money thing, really. Um, I just want to do the site, you know, make sure they're all straight and lined up with each other. I'd like two in front of each business, one for American flag and one for some sort of a flag of theirs also, you know, the, the floppy flags they use. So, um...
Here we're up.
Yep, okay. All right, so here's the grand finale. So the pavilion, phase one, forty-nine nine, Oakland Street lighting, thirteen, park signage, eight, banner frames, thirty-seven, curb cleanup, eighty-eight. So in a perfect world, you'd say Jack goes spend eighty-four hundred dollars.
Eighty-four thousand.
I know, eighty-four thousand. Sorry, I let the best one point out. Eighty-four thousand, but, you know, already just presenting, and I see holes in some of these things. So, um, is there anything in here that you guys like or you think you, you could commit to or like at all?
I like it all, but I would like to start with number one, downtown pavilion. I think, I think that'd be a really good... I think, I think that'd be a really good.
Well, I'm sorry, Cliff, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Go ahead.
I like it all, too. My question is, and I know you can't answer this, how do we shoehorn this into the budget that we just approved?
I should've got here yesterday.
That's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money. I know we've got money, I think about eight-hundred-and-some-thousand set aside in capital outlay. We just spent quite a bit on finishing that drainage project that we discussed earlier, or we committed to spend it. I don't know. What I would like to do is see if we can get an opinion, a legal opinion, on if any of this could be used with tourism money. Like park signage, the frames, the banner frames. I don't think they would go for the pavilion or the lighting, or probably the curb cleanup. But we could pursue that and see if there's, if there's some money we can tap there. And then, we've got quite a bit of money in capital outlay for major projects.
We could do a budget amendment and move some of that money over?
Well, actually, I don't even think we'd have to do a budget amendment, because it's sitting there. I think when we made a motion to do one of these projects, we would just say to be funded out of capital outlay restricted satisfaction.
Got it. Jack, I need a copy of the slides. You got another copy?
It should've been in your packet. It looks like that.
It's like it's this.
Yeah, I don't have it. Thank you.
My top two priorities would be one and three. I really like the pavilion, and I really like the park signage. I really like our new sign that we're branding, and that we get to see our brand. I like the brand that we have when you see the poles on town that have that. We have them on the police cars. And I just really like that. And we really need to, our signage at Bullfoot Park is...
It's railroad ties.
It's bad. It was good at one time, but now it's not.
We were, I got two compliments from Kingfisher this week about our sign program. One of them said, "I wish our signs were consistent," because they're, they're kind of willy-nilly. They don't have a brand. And someone else, pretty high-level, said, "Boy, I really like what you're doing with your signs. Now they all match," and the entrance signs and things like that. So.
So how much money do we have in that hotel motel?
Happens to have that.
Yeah, I don't see that, but.
Well, I may not find it either, Barb. I think as far as income for the coming year, she's just lumped it all in taxes. So, but let me see if we've got it in fine balance.
I could find it, Greg.
No, I don't think it's broken down. It doesn't appear to be broken down. That's something we can find out.
Yeah, because we had quite a bit in there at one time.
Oh, maybe, maybe here. No, it's not there yet. On page eight, there is the estimated revenues. There's hotel motel tax. Is that what you're talking about? Yeah. But that's not showing how much, that's showing what is expected to come in, but not showing what we've got.
That's true.
It's showing thirty thousand. I don't.
Is that all?
That's gonna come in this year.
Yeah, it's way down, Barb.
Yeah, it was generating like fifty-five or sixty, but now the hotel's empty most of the time, so it's, it's not generating like it did.
We need the petroleum industry to pick back up.
So I was asking, David, I have a question. We have the old pavilion, whatever it is, I'm gonna call it, side other companies, that grain. Can we not take that as a city and sell that and use part of that money to pay for part of that? I mean, it's literally sitting there rusting.
I mean, that would be the deal. We need to put it up for auction.
But can we, can we do that and use part of that, use that profit to help pay for part of that?
I think you've already declared it salvage, didn't you?
No.
Oh, no, it stopped short of that, I think.
We was going to, but we talked about maybe putting it out, one part of it out here at the water plant, so they can park their equipment underneath it, you know. And, because we can't put it inside of city limits without having an engineer setting. The only place that we can put it at would be at the water park, at the water plant.
Do you really see that happening?
You know, my biggest, my biggest deal, you know, the more and more equipment that we get, we need to get it underneath it. We need, you know, we do need to get it underneath it. Now, do we need both of them? No. You know, but could we put a little one out there? You know, you start to spend a hundred and sixty, you know, and I'm sure it's gonna be more equipment that we're gonna have to buy. We got a brand-new trailer sitting down there, and escalator sitting down there in the weather.
It's actually a water shop.
Okay. Yeah, but what about the trailer?
Trailer's out.
So, you know.
I agree with you. It needs to be.
You know, we need it.
Just surplus property. Can't you do that? Just a surplus property?
We've declared surplus and sell it. But I think what, currently, if I'm wrong here, I don't think what Harp's getting at is it could be put to good use to be erected.
Well, that's what I'm talking about. There's two of them there. Put one down there and sell one. But, you know, because out there, you know, you can put that up. You don't need tiers. We don't need sixteen feet or, you know, you know, man, we don't have to worry about people, the public getting in there, so we don't have to worry about the engineers spending. We can put it in out there. And all we need is a roof. We don't need sides, you know. Just to get our stuff out of, out of the weather. You know, I ain't gonna say it. It's probably gonna happen in my time on the board, but, you know, it'd be nice if we could.
We need to do that. We got expensive equipment just sitting there, you know.
And I was just gonna add.
And we have even a sopping tube, you know.
Shelley, that's a very good point, and I agree with what you said. We need to get rid of that stuff.
Yeah.
You need to use it or get rid of it? Because it's not making you, it's just going to rust.
We got a police car that needs to come up, too. Transmission's looking.
I don't think I'm talking about.
Yeah, Shelley, we do need to put it up.
Okay, back to our proposals here. We are gonna vote on these one at a time after this presentation. Jack, I want to say thank you very much for the presentation for the downtown pavilion. I would like to make a motion to do the pavilion using the funds that are...
Restricted sales type capital outlay.
Restricted sales type capital outlay. Of forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars.
I'll second that, and then can we discuss?
Yes. Go ahead and discuss. I'll write.
What if, and I'm just throwing this out there, guys, but what if we go ahead and get that project completed? Or maybe take on one of the smaller projects, like the park signage, and get one or two completed and then revisit this? I don't want to forget to revisit it. I don't want it to go away.
Always might do.
I mean, I think we need to do it in steps, you know, like that. I mean, we've been talking about a pavilion for five, six years.
Yes.
You know, it's not only just for the, you know, you can use it for a thousand things, you know. Revival, you know, we could use it, you know, if the Lions Festival rains out, you could probably put it underneath there. You know, a lot of things you could use it for, you know. I thought you were gonna bring up like the rodeo rain.
Well, that's on, that's on our long-term plan. And I can talk about that another night. But my, my, part of my long-term vision would be to build an entirely new rodeo grounds if we could on the old dump site, where the soccer fields are gonna be put in.
Because I have been, while we're on this subject, I have been on the state to plug that well. And once we take it over.
That gives us more room.
You know, we don't have to have them dig up that gravel, so it makes a parking for the rodeo, whatever, so.
I got a lot of work to do on that one, though. That's gonna, I gotta bring the EPA, and they're gonna wanna drill it and all kinds of other stuff. But to see what it, could we, what could we do with that land?
Because it is on, it is on the abandoned wells, this, so it is, you know, a subject to be plugged. They have to wait so long for it to be on there. And I've been calling them about once a week to get them to plug.
There you go. Okay.
Any other discussion about the downtown pavilion for forty-nine thousand nine hundred? If not, roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
I myself would like to not do the signs right now. I think the park signage would be something that would really be a super deal. One thing is, because we don't have permission from the other building, and I, I think the park signage is very important to get another step of our brand going.
By the way, the one for Memorial Park would take the place of that hand-painted "Welcome to Hennessy" sign. The one that's in the garden area.
The park sign will come underneath there, isn't it, right?
Well, that's what I think we should pursue, to see if we can. And I would recommend if we pass the park signage tonight, that it would be, it would either be funded from tourism tax or capital outlay, depending off the tourism. That way, it could go ahead and be done.
Because my other question, Jack's here. Don't we got some deal with him already with the tourism package, as far as?
Yeah, the amount that, my, my funding comes from that. And I think Tiffany benchmarked, or not, what do you call it, earmarked it. So we probably need to see what's in there, you know, to be sure we don't run that one dry.
I think, I think we're, I'm pretty sure we're taking out more than what is going in each month.
I think that's the case right now.
So it's probably not gonna last.
Yep, I think that's the case.
You know, that's just something that I, you know, because I know Jack's doing, you know, his project. I don't want to take away from that, you know.
No, yeah. But. I'd have no problem doing the park signage. If we finally take it from tourism, we take it from there, unless it's gonna run it too short. Maybe we want to just do it under capital outlay. It's eighty-eight hundred dollars. It's not.
Because what are, what are we, about a year with you, about?
We're about the one-year mark, and there's one more year.
Like thirty-six thousand?
It's, yeah, I don't know what the total is. It's thirty-five hundred a month.
So, yeah, so what we got in, we probably have to do it in the other.
Yeah, but you're right. You did it on capital outlay.
I just don't believe you wrote me one.
You got, Bert had this?
I make a motion that we do the park signage for Bullfoot Park and Memorial Park at a cost of eighty-eight hundred dollars to be funded with restricted sales tax, capital outlay.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Okay, Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
One question. Does anybody else see that's something that we could do on this list? Or should we just table this for right now?
I would like to, I would like to make a suggestion. When we take out that hand-painted "Welcome to Hennessy" sign, I'd like to see that base all cleaned up and something really nice put in there, flowers or... If you go by there, it's just kinda, I don't know what's in there.
You gotta run that as plain and cookie.
Well, the sign would go back in the place of that one.
Right.
So, yeah, we could put more than dirt in there, or weeds, yes.
I'm thinking if we needed to dig that out and put in better dirt, or I don't know what we need.
Yeah, I'll get with David before we do something with that.
I have, Cliff, I have a question also.
Okay.
David, what's the possibility of you talking to, to the employees, try to get a, try to get some kind of idea on whether or not they could do that curb cleanup for us with that skid steer? Troy Watkins does some real good work on that skid steer.
He does, he does.
He can, he can really make, make some dirt shine now. If we could do that, it would save us quite a bit of money.
That's what the possibility is with me talking to him? A hundred percent.
Possibility of him saying, "Yeah, I'll do it."
Oh, I didn't see him saying no. But, yeah, and, you know, thinking about getting with O-MAG first to make sure our entrance recovers working, especially on the other.
Exactly. Yes, sir.
I think.
I think we need to explore it anyway. I think you need to explore it, if you don't mind. That's my opinion. I am, I am not directing your activities. I'm asking if you can do that.
Yeah, and we've got the attachment for the, for the skid steer, that gravel bucket actually has a flatter bucket that can do a lot more cutting.
Yeah.
Than the regular bucket, yeah.
That's all I got, sir.
So we'll just follow up on that. Did anybody else want to, the lighting or the banner frames or the?
So I really like the idea of the lighting. My family, we spend a lot of time in Great Line, Texas. They have a lot of this, this style of decoration that is very popular, definitely around the holidays. I'd like to see us revisit that at some point. But until we can get confirmation on the other building, I feel like we should off-table that for another time.
Randy, I'm very interested in that also. If we're gonna do, what did we discuss a minute ago about doing a legal review on?
The tourism money.
Right, exactly. Okay. Tourism money on, we were talking park signage and banner frames. I just had an idea. Why not throw the Oklahoma street lighting in with that legal review? Just, just from the wild possibility that that might be eligible for tourism money also. I mean, that's just a suggestion.
Yeah, I agree.
We just talked about those, that fund's already counted down, right? That fund's already counted down, because we got a project with him.
Fund's already gone?
Yeah.
I mean, we could still do a legal review on it.
Yeah, yeah.
It'd be the next.
Then we need to see where we're at. We need to know how much money's in that fund.
Yeah. I'd be happy if we just got a legal review on those three items in the middle there. And Troy will do that curb cleanup. I'll be a hack-in.
That'd make a big difference.
It would, really, it would.
I'm happy it's all been done, so I'm ready to go on the next cut.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, guys.
Kay, let me stop you for one second, if I may. I'm assuming the drilling of the sidewalks is just something that can... I'm assuming the drilling of the sidewalks is just something that can be done, correct?
Bonnie?
He's, he turned the page.
I mean, we have, we don't have a fan.
I got a hamburger, you got it in hand.
We got a hamburger.
Ah, oh.
Yeah, it's just a matter of getting the right-sized bit.
Yeah.
And even determining how big the pole, the pipes are.
Yeah, that's all gonna determine what the flag poles are gonna be. But, yeah, we can get location and then that's something.
Let me, let me find out if there's a, a factory-made sleeve with a lid on it, and if not, let me figure out, well, you're a machineist.
Hey, that's my brother, he, he got to probably do that.
There you go. Could you, yeah, see what, you know, cause I'd like to see him like six inches deep with a little cap on of some sort?
Tell him the town's gonna allow you to hire an additional officer, he will dominate those.
The main thing we need is to know what flag poles are gonna be, so if they was actually able to build them, they know what size to build.
Right, yeah, and I'll get with the Lions Club to see what they have in mind for, you know, what's, what's this gonna look like, and what size, and maybe even have a flag pole here. Yep.
So they'll have it for a pattern.
But PVC pipe would be better, set in metal, and they also make a cap. That way, if they do break, you could get them out.
Yep.
And also.
Okay, all right, I'll get with you guys on that part, all right. Angel Molina.
What?
Angel Molina, point of contact with the Lions Club.
Okay, yeah, he's the one that.
He's gonna head, he's gonna head that up for.
Driving the, the flag thing, yeah.
Discussion with possible action on the Hennessy Fire Department Engine Number One and Number Two, paint, maintenance, and repairs. Okay.
Bert, I got a few questions, if I could.
Okay.
This is, and I don't want you to spend a very long time doing it, what's our resolution with the county to the town, to kind of like the fire department, the tax?
What's our, what?
Resolution with, that we have with the county and the town about, you know, when you purchase equipment with county money, how's it become Hennessy property?
Uh, it is just titled to the Town of Hennessy for insurance purposes. The county does not want to retain ownership on, on that equipment, even though it's bought, it's an interlocal agreement between the county and the town.
I mean, I, I have talked to some people in some counties, that's county property, you tell, you tell tax done and over with, you know, so I just wanted to know what, kinda what our stuff is.
Yeah, it's, it's actually, all of the, all of the equipment that has been purchased with county funding is titled to the Town of Hennessy.
You know, what, the way I understood it, if, if it's county-owned, we couldn't spend money on it, right?
I think through an interlocal agreement, we could, I don't know if I know.
I just knew it had to be something in the resolution or something, that's why I was asking.
Yeah.
I'll leave you alone, clean ways, sir.
I can give you a quick rundown on this, if you want one, or I'd be glad to answer questions. The Engine Number One is thirty-two years old, still a very, very, very good engine. It, in order to maintain our ISO ratings, our pumps have to be certified annually, which is a strenuous proj, strenuous project on the equipment. It has to pump at its full-blown capacity for twenty minutes without any heat cups, and it has to hold a vacuum on that entire system. I can't remember the minutes on that, maybe ten or fifteen. Anyway, we have got on Engine One, it's time to repack the pump, and while they're in there, it's a good idea to go ahead and install new seals on the pump transmission. The way these trucks operate, a drive line comes out of the transmission on the truck into a pump transmission, and another drive line goes to the rear axle of the truck. So when you're in pump gear, it's a power inverter that runs the pump. Anyway, you do not want to get water, cause you've got a fine line area there between the water and oil, you do not want to get water in those, so those need to be replaced. There are several valves that are leaking minimally, but to keep them to where they'll pass vacuum test, they need to be rebuilt, they've just got neoprene bolts there, regular core turned bulb out, just like you all use in the water department, with a neoprene ball that, that gets etched and needs to be replaced. Other than that, and this does include the annual, annual pump maintenance on it, the Truck One is, is pricey thirteen thousand two seventy-three sixteen, which is why it's on the agenda, and that's basically just simply because it's thirty-two years old. If you look at Truck Two, the estimate on it's twelve hundred and ten dollars, because it is a two thousand and twelve truck, so it's twenty years newer. And then also included is just an annual maintenance on the tanker truck at a thousand and sixty, but, and I, I've spoken with Tammy Hunt, we can't use restricted sales tax out of the emergency services fund, while this isn't purchasing a capital item, it is extending the life of a major capital purpose, so it could be, it can be funded out of that, which is where I recommend it. So did anybody have any questions on that that I might be able to explain?
Where do you take the trucks to get this work done?
The company is actually out of Chickasha, they, they, they will come here and do all of this in-house.
That's very good news to, for me.
Yeah.
I like that.
Yeah, they have, they have a service truck that's able to perform all of this.
I'm guessing you guys have used them before?
Yes.
You've got a lot of long history with them?
Yeah. Yeah, in fact, that Engine Two, it's already had a major rebuild on the pump, and that's what we're trying to prevent on Engine One, before we get into having to do more major than we're doing here. Yeah, they, they are, their technicians are emergency vehicle certified technicians and pump technicians.
I see there's a, a shipping deal, so I guess they have to order some parts to have to come in, yes, but they don't keep these on.
Right.
Because it is twenty years old, you said?
Yeah, well, thirty-two years.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thirty-two years, yeah.
It's, so they don't keep them on hand?
Right. There is some things they will have to work, and on this estimate, like Repair One, remove and replace pump packing and packing gland, the packing gland may not need replaced, but it may, so he went ahead and listed it, which I'd prefer he do than surprising us later with that.
Right.
Cause once you're out trying to get a fire, you don't have no, you have no water. Right. Then you can't put out no fire with no water.
Makes the bad day worse.
It sure does. So I make a motion to accept the quote from MITRE, Fire Support to Repair Engine One, Engine Two, and Tanker One.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Excuse me, which funds did you say that was coming out of?
Restricted sales tax, emergency services.
Or to AIL, discussion with possible action, written policy for resolution regarding the handling of citizens' complaints presented to individual trustees. I see that you have a.
You know, I put this on here, and I had kinda come up with a draft, I got three calls from one individual on a Saturday morning regarding a plant that was planted, and it had nothing to do with any other complaints, but I just, I feel like we need a policy in place so that citizens aren't.
Bert, I'm sorry, can you back up? I couldn't hear you there.
Yeah. I said, I got a call on a Saturday morning, three different calls from the same gentleman complaining about the same thing, and I feel like that, and I know some other complaints were, were expressed that weekend as well, I don't know the details of those, but I just feel like we need something in place to, so if somebody comes to me, they come to one of you, they come to Randy, Cliff, whatever, that we're all on the same page and doing the same thing, and my suggestion is that those people, and let me just read through this, and I did submit this to the town attorney, and he had some suggestions that I changed. I'll just read it so that the public understands as well where, what my thinking is. The town trustee received a complaint, shall refer this citizen to contact the town administrator during regular business hours. Should the complaint resolution remain unsatisfactory, the citizen should be informed that the item will be placed on the next regular meeting agenda for the town board to discuss as a whole. The agenda item will not be heard if the complainant is not present. If the complaint involves personnel, the item will be placed on the agenda to discuss in executive session, listing the employee's name. Town trustee shall not be involved in resolution of complaints individually, but only as the board of trustees at a scheduled meeting. In the event of complaint regarding a police officer, the chief of police will review any recordings from the officer's body camera and/or other recordings as deemed necessary, and will present the recording to the town administrator for review. Body camera or any recordings involving personnel in the town, and therefore may be viewed by the board of trustees in executive session after proper placement on a meeting agenda, provided that the issue involves personnel disciplinary action, which has not been resolved by the town administrator or department yet. Two or three things I, I want to point out. I feel like one of the, one of the biggest complaints that I have had in all my years on the board are people speeding up and down Main Street. But yet, when our officers do the job and stop those people, then they wanna complain about that, so I feel like people want law and order, as long as it's not law and order directed at them. I'm sorry. And I just, I just think that we've got a town administrator in place, we've got an interim now, I feel like complaints ought to go through them, I feel like if it's not resolved, it gets resolved right here in this meeting. If a complainant does not feel that their complaint is worthy to bring to this board and present it in public, then why should we be bothered on our own time about it? And I know that probably sounds crass, and I'm sorry, but that's just, that's just how I view it, if, that's what we meet for every month in this meeting, is to listen to the citizens, and this is the place to do it. So what I would, what, my proposal is that we pass this either as a resolution or a written policy, and send it to the town attorney to add the legalese to, to become a part of our protocols and regulations.
So how do we change it in my handbook?
Huh?
How do we change it in my trustee handbook?
This will override that, if it's a resolution.
So how do we change it in Oklahoma statute? Where says that the trustee has the right to investigate anything?
Where does it say that in the statute?
Hold up there, you got it all?
No, I meant to bring that in my handbook.
Okay, it's in Oklahoma statute Title XI, Section 12-106, and what that is, Bert and Cliff, that's the list of designated powers vested in the board of trustees, okay? And this, this has been a topic that I've brought up several times in several different meetings. I'm talking about me now, I'm not talking about Harold or you guys, I'm talking about me. When I got elected, or when I ran for office, a lot of the citizens here in town said, you know, "I'm gonna vote for you, but please, please, don't get up there on that board and do nothing." And, you know, I made several promises to several people that I was gonna be an active town trustee, and I was gonna go right by the book and do stuff the way I'm supposed to do it. I went through the eight-hour OML training on the computer when I first got elected. Back in September, I went to the OML training in, at the convention in Tulsa, and as we continued to discuss what I can and can't do, or what I should or shouldn't do, I went to state authorities at the State Capitol Building and went over this, this itemized list with them, and they assured me that I have the right and the authority, as well as you guys do, all of you, to, we have, I can show you the page, I'm sure you guys know what I'm talking about. Appoint and remove, confirm appointments of designated town officers, employees, is provided by law. There's seven items listed. Number five is the one I'm talking about. Inquire into the conduct of any office, department, or agency of the town, and investigate municipal affairs, or authorize and provide for such inquiries. Now, again, I'm falling back a few months, I've, I've, I've tried to work and gain access to some certain financial information, and I've been told no. I was told that I've stepped over a line, and I was told that it was none of my business. And when I talked to the state authorities in the State Capitol Building, they told me that that's, that's basically a violation of, of state law, and that I should have any and all access to any and all municipal records, with one exception, which is personnel records, and with the, with the appropriate redactions on personnel records, I could even see them, and so can you guys.
Sure.
Now, when it comes to investigating, okay, that's kind of a, a big word, it's a large scope, and Bert, you've told me, back when you were mayor, you've told me several times in the meetings, that I can't do anything on my own, that everything has to be done as a board, that we have, we have no power or authority as an individual. Well, I got to thinking about that, and that's one reason I went to the State Capitol and talked to those authorities down there, is let's say, let's say. and talked to those authorities down there, is let's say, let's say, for example purposes, I've talked to Shelley about wanting to look at the, the financial database, okay? And I haven't done that yet, but I want to, I want her to show it to me because they're struggling with it in the office, and Shelley has told us that, okay? So I'm thinking, well, would it be right for all five of us to circle around her computer while she shows that, that to me? Or does common sense say that I can do that on my own and then come to the next meeting? And on our agenda, we have councilperson's report. When I'm out doing stuff on my own, I feel like, as an elected official, that I should be able to do that and then show up at this meeting. I'm not going to closehold the information that I find, I'm going to show up and I'm going to brief you guys on it. I'm going to give you a councilperson's report. Does that make sense? As long as it is publicly possible, I would, and I might even put an executive session on the agenda. Somebody talking?
Under.
Okay, all right. Now I've lost my train of thought. I might even put an executive session on the agenda to talk about things that can't be talked about in public, if that makes sense. So, I'm, I'm kind of bragging on myself here, I'm not really a dumb guy. I've read the laws, I've read the laws, you got in this, in this sheet that you did, in this suggestion, suggested document that you did, you talked about body camera video. You can ask Aaron, he's sitting here right now. Anybody, any citizen of Hennessy can come in here and request to see that video, and by state law, we have to show it to them.
With exception.
I say "we" because I'm on the team.
With exception.
Well, there's some redaction requirements to say if somebody has standing there on the video with no clothes on, that has to be redacted.
Okay, and I'm not even, okay. Finish and then I'll...
That's an example. But I'm, to be honest with you, now that I've been on the board for 13 months, I've, I'm continuing to feel frustrated about not being able to do things, and not being able to look at things, and not being able to see things. You told me a couple of meetings ago, or last, the last meeting we had, I could get with Ms. Tammy Hunt and see any financial data that I want to see.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Have you done that?
No, I have not. I'm going to after this conversation. I saw this item on the agenda, and I will be getting with her. But I don't want you guys to think that I'm not a team member on this board, I try to be, and I'm going to continue to try to be. But I'm being honest here, I can't talk to you guys about this without being here in the meeting.
That's absolutely true.
So, I'm telling you, I'm frustrated, and I want to see stuff, I want to be involved. I'm, I'm not going to direct the employees, I'm smarter than that. David Trainer can direct the employees. The supervisors can direct the employees, okay? But I want to be involved. When we have citizens complaining to us, yeah, I can turn it over to David, who's over there, right? I can, I don't mind going to the town administrator with it, but I still want to be involved. Does that make sense to you? Cliff, am I, am I making sense to you?
Well, yeah, yeah, okay, but I don't want to do micromanaging. I want, well, if there, there's a problem with an employee, they need to go to the, that, their head, whether it be Aaron or whomever. And then if it's not resolved, then it goes to the town administrator. And then if it doesn't go, then it comes to us.
Okay. I'm in the, I got to, let me, be patient, be patient with me if you guys don't mind. You know, I have a suggestion at the end of my conversation. I'm talking about, now I'm talking about, I'm talking about way more than just body camera videos, okay? Now I'm talking about elected official accountability. Let me ask you a question, Bert, real quick on this. Did, you were mayor when we did this last year? Did you draft this?
No.
Who drafted this?
It was given to us by O-MAG, our, our insurance carrier.
Sure.
And it was based on one and another town, I cannot remember the name of the town.
All right. I want to talk about, I want to talk about this for just a minute, and I've got some other stuff in here that is on topic. But half of this book has no references in it, and I didn't complain about that last year when we approved this, because I knew that it was a living document and that we could work it some more. This thing requires annual review. Perfect timing for what we're doing here with, with your suggested verbiage. I suggest that we hammer this out and, and add it. Randy's new, Randy needs to get his hands on this, Randy needs to make inputs to this, that's my opinion. Now, back to me going to the State Capitol Building and talking to the state authorities on what I can and can't do. I'm talking about elected official accountability. Quiet, please, I'm talking.
Well, we've got a severe weather event, I just asked Jack to let us know and keep us posted for safety.
I'm talking about elected official accountability, Item C, it's on Page Three. The use of committees dealing with topics as the board of trustees deems appropriate, including financial and project-related oversight. So, maybe we need to set up some committees to look at some of our financial data.
David, we look at it every month, sitting at this table.
No, sir, we don't. We look at overviews.
So you want to come in and look at every single transaction, is that what I'm hearing you say?
I did not say that, okay? If you'll just, just calm down and let me talk, and then I'll, then I'll turn it over to you, I promise. I'm not trying to be disrespectful to you. Talking about finances. The lady that taught the course that I attended at Tulsa back in September, she was very clear and specific on us. We are responsible for every penny coming into the town hall and every penny going out. And when we get those purchase order folders that are stacked up for us to sign purchase orders on, all that does to me is makes me, it makes me raise questions in my mind. I'm not very comfortable at all with going in there and sitting down and signing purchase orders without knowing what's going on, without talking about it. Why did this cost this much? Did we get bids on this stuff? Was it competitive? You know, I could go on and on and on. Do you guys feel comfortable signing those purchase orders in there, in those folders?
I do, I do.
Have you done that for years?
Yes.
And you've never had any problems?
No, no.
How long's it been since the state has audited this organization?
I thought we... I don't know that we've ever been audited, but here's my point, David.
Okay, go ahead, and I'll pick back up.
Okay. I trust our employees and our department heads, and if I didn't, I would have it on the agenda for executive session for replacement. I do not want to micromanage this town. I do not think any board member has any business micromanaging this town on an individual basis.
All right.
And that appears to be, to me, where you want to go with this.
No, it's not. I do not want to micromanage anything.
Well...
I tell you what I'm going to do, though, is I'm going to make some information requests to Ms. Hunt.
Okay.
If she doesn't give me what I want to see, then I'm going to do the same information request to Mr. Trainer, and if he don't give me what I want to see, I am going to go to the state authorities again, and I'm going to invite them to our next meeting, and I'm going to have them brief you guys on what our duties and responsibilities are the way they see them. Now, I want to talk about transparency, it's also in here. I'm talking about seeing records, here's what I'm talking about. The implementation of transparency policies adopted by the board of trustees to make information about town government easily accessible to the public. To me, I'm part of the public, I should be able to see anything in there.
And you can. Have you ever come in and made a written request for specific documents?
No, I have not. Let me tell you what I did. On three different occasions, if you remember, our previous town administrator, she would say, if you want to see something, come see me, if you want to talk to me, come see me. If you have problems, come see me. I went to her three times and asked for the same information, and I never got it. Okay? Now, we had this law enforcement body camera video on a family. Now, I'm not, I'm not saying anything bad about any police officers, but the family complained to me, are my personal friends, and they asked me to see if I could look into it. They asked me to see the video. And I told them that being as I'm a family friend, I would turn it over to another trustee, and I would back out of it. I thought that was the smart thing to do. I turned it over to Harold and asked him to look at it. So he went up there, and we haven't seen it yet, or he hasn't seen it yet. Now...
Can I interrupt for a minute?
Go ahead.
Any personnel issue which includes body camera on a police officer cannot be opened up to the public.
You need to read the law.
I read the law.
Which one are you reading?
The same one you're reading on Page 15, or whatever it is in your handbook, I've read that. Item 10, Page 15. And it is under review by our town attorney, the way I understand, am I correct, Aaron?
I called him and asked if he was reviewing it, he didn't give me a yes or a no.
Who didn't?
John Witten.
Hey, I've not discussed it with him, so I don't know.
Okay. Well, I'm kind of using this, I didn't mean to, I'm not trying to beat Aaron up or, or his officers, that's not what I'm trying to do at all, and I'm not trying to second-guess them on that body camera video. I have technically not asked to see it. I turned it over to another trustee to work it.
Why didn't you not turn it over to the town administrator?
Because I wanted to be completely clear of it, because I'm friends with the family.
But...
Now Harold, I don't know if he turned it over to David or not.
That's what our town administrator's for.
Okay.
And this is exactly why the last town administrator left. Because certain board members refused to work with her and go around and micromanage behind her back.
Yeah.
And it's cost the town thousands and thousands of dollars.
Really?
Yes.
Who was that board member?
You know who it is.
I don't know who it is.
Okay. I think you figured it out.
Let me ask you this. Do you think that, if, if we do a review on this manual, which I think we should, it's required, am I going to be able to find reference material on all of this stuff? Because some of this stuff, it just seems like personal opinion. And like I said, I let it go when I first got on the board, knowing that it was a living document, before we would get to work it again later. And like I said earlier, now with Randy on the board, we need to give him a bite on this thing, too. I want to talk about board conduct with town staff for just a second. One thing that I've learned as studying this, again, based on your agenda item, limit contact to specific town staff. I understand that, these people are busy up here. I, I don't come in here and bother them. The last sentence in this paragraph says, materials, I'm kind of, I don't like that word. I'm guessing that means, like if I asked to see something, here's my point, materials supplied to a board member in response to a request will be made available to all members of the board, so that all have equal access to information. I think that's very fair and square. I like that. Here's the problem I have with it. I've been on the board 13 months, and I have never been provided any information of any kind. So that tells me that I'm either being left out of the flow of information, or you guys haven't ever asked for any information the entire time I've been on the board. Because if you'd have asked for any information, I should have got a copy of it. If Cliff asked for information, I should have got a copy of it. I have never got a copy of anything from the board, or from the town, on any topic. And I know you guys have had to have inquired on stuff. I know you have, in the last 13 months. Have you ever come in the office and said, hey, I need to know this, this, and this? Well, I should be getting copied on that. Randy should, Harold should, Cliff should, you should when we do it. So, even this, even this manual here, it even increases my frustration, and you guys use that word, "micromanage," a lot. I'm not looking to micromanage anything. I'm just looking to do what I'm required to do by state law.
I disagree.
Well, I disagree with you, and I could do it in a fairly professional manner. That's the also in the handbook, when we disagree, we're supposed to disagree...
Exactly.
And agree to disagree.
Exactly.
So I'm just telling you, if, if...
I just...
If my frustration continues, I'm going to, I'm going to do something on the agenda...
Do it.
And get some state folks in here where you guys can ask them questions...
Do it.
And you can verify what I'm telling you. We're supposed to be doing all this stuff.
I think to put everything to rest, that needs to be done.
Right.
Absolutely.
Okay.
The other thing I would highly recommend, Harold had just got on the board, if I'm, if I'm correct, and we had a training session from O-MAG after a meeting, who made a very good presentation, and by us attending that presentation, gave us a discount on the town's insurance. You were not on the board yet, David. The main thing they pounded into our heads was that we, as a board, were not micromanagers. And I don't feel like it's fair if a citizen has a complaint about any department in this community to take it to a board member and a board member get involved. I had a call three times, started at 7:30, two weeks ago Saturday, on a complaint issue. And what I should have done is said, call David Trainer Monday morning, he'll be in the office, but I didn't. I listened to the guy. I won't do that again, because that is not my business. And if a citizen doesn't feel that their issue's been resolved, like I said in my document that I presented, bring it here, show up. And I have no problems with body camera footage, and if the parties involved would sign a release, I'd love for it to play on that big screen right there.
Yeah, I, I have no problem with the current body camera video that's under legal review. I have no problem with that. I don't, you know, I'm not really involved in it because I tried to step back out of fear of being accused of a biased opinion based on my friendships with the family.
But, okay...
So I turned that over to Harold, and Harold got with, with Aaron, and, you know, that's where we're at.
My proposal would have eliminated you being involved, because you would have told the complain, call our interim administrator Monday morning.
Yeah, but, here comes a "yeah, but." I want to be involved. I think I was elected to get involved in this town.
I think you were elected, as all of us, to represent the people, and I think we represent the people, not on the phone and individually, but we represent them sitting at this board table every month. And I feel like the policies and procedures we pass, we do with the people's best interests in mind. But I don't think it's any of our jobs to, to go out and actually watch what each employee's doing.
I don't want to do that.
Okay? I'm not, I could retaliate, I'm not going to.
Well, again, this isn't personal between me and you. It's not personal between me and any of you guys on the board. I'm just telling you, I'm very frustrated with not being able to do what I think I need to do, based on what the state is telling me on this list of duties and responsibilities.
You should be able to get any public record, as any citizen can.
All right. All right.
Any citizen.
Okay. All right.
I mean, I, just what I hear you saying is you think somebody's trying to hide something, and I don't think that's the case.
No, I haven't said that yet. I've got a lot more digging to do before I say that.
Okay.
And, you know, you know, and if I have a problem with who I, you know, if I try, if I, if I'm looking for information and I'm not getting it and it's with an individual employee, then I'll put on here, executive session, and we'll, and we'll go in there.
Exactly.
Okay? And I know that I'm not supposed to come out here in front of the camera and talk bad about our employees, and I'm not gonna do that. I also know I'm not supposed to supervise them, and I'm not gonna do that. But I do want to at least be able to comply with this stuff as I read the law and as I was trained by O-M-L to do. And as the state authorities that I talked to about this stuff have told me that I should be doing. And, and, uh, just going in there and signing purchase orders in a folder is not what I wanna do. I mean, I'm gonna do that to the best of my ability, but...
I guess I have a little trouble understanding what you want to do beyond that. I mean, we see the bill...
Okay.
We see the bill. Let's say, for instance, they go to Rutherford Brothers and get lawnmower blades. We see the bill, we see the purchase order. We sign the claim.
Okay, let me give you an example. I'll give you an example of what I want. I'm getting ready to ask for this. I would like to know how much money we've spent, uh, out of the street and alley fund for the past twelve months. Why do I wanna know that? Because I haven't seen a lot of repairs on the street and alleys in town.
Do you know what the street and alley money is used for?
Should be used for streets and alleys.
Street lighting.
Street lighting?
It goes for street lighting.
That don't even make sense to me.
Am I right about that? Yeah.
See, that, that's a concern of mine is, is, and I'm not complaining...
David, it's been done that way for a hundred years.
I'm not complaining. Well, it may be time for change.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not complaining about any one employee. What I'm saying is, is I haven't seen a lot of work on our streets lately, over the past twelve months. And when my truck drops down in the potholes, I know it. It's easy to recognize as a problem. I can't believe our citizens have, you know, complain, I haven't heard any complaints about the street.
They have, you know...
I'm sure they will. So that's an example of what I'm talking about. I would like to know, in a cap, in a captured data set, again, I'm back to data, I would like to know how much money we spent on our street repairs for the past twelve months.
We get that every quarter in that quarterly report.
Okay, I'll review my quarterlies, uh...
And feel free to call me, I'd be glad to say and go over with you. Cause maybe I'm missing something.
Well, let me ask you this.
But your street repairs come from restricted sales tax that's set aside for the street improvement.
Okay. All right. Now, let's discuss this. We just passed a budget. We just funded the water department, we just funded the police department, we just funded the sewer department, okay? Now that we passed, you know, legislation here to set all that funding up, what I wanna know is, what I wanna see is, I would like to see the written documented plan that the water department has, how they're gonna use this money. I would like to see the plan that the sewer department has, how they're gonna use this money. And I would like to see the plan of how the street and alley department is gonna use this money. I could go on and on and on, I'll stop there. What, is there a problem with me seeing that? Do we have docu, do we have, David, do we have documented plans on how we're gonna spend this money?
I don't know of.
Not that you know of?
I have, I have, Tanny sent me last night on the budget stuff, for my budget, I think it was last night, maybe the day before, is how each fund, we're, they're all kinds of different funds, but how, all the funds are broken down for where it comes, what you're using it for. Like vehicle maintenance, building maintenance, whatever. She sent me that last night.
More tools, equipment, fuel.
Alyssa, Alyssa, you're, you're available, so I'm gonna ask you, have you got a documented, written plan on how you're gonna use your water department budget and move forward in time?
I mean, not the whole budget, no. We have things from the capital, the capital plan.
Okay. All right. I'm not, I'm trying to put you on the spot, I just, I'm just saying that, you know, again, if you, if you wanna call that micromanagement, I would disagree with that. I'm not trying to micromanage. I wanna see where the money's spent. I'll stop.
And I think you've got every right, you know, but I certainly don't disagree with that at all.
I'd like to work with all you guys on this right here, get it hammered out and...
I would like to...
Agree to disagree, if and when.
I would like to, prior to us doing that, ask for another presentation by O-MAG, because that's where that document came from. And I think they could give us some good input on revising that.
Yeah, I, I just don't understand why they don't have all this stuff referenced. Cause I can't look it up, you know, I wanna go look it up. I want, I wanna read out of here and I wanna go look it up where it's at in the law. And I can't do that. Half of it is referenced. Randy, you need to get a copy of this.
Yeah, I don't have a copy of that yet.
We've got a agenda topic at hand. I'm going to make a motion to adopt a resolution or written policy, whichever the town attorney feels is appropriate language, on a complaint process acquisition.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Bert?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Dave?
No.
Harold?
Harold.
Randy?
Yes.
Do you have a break for a second? Jack, just asked me to check the strong winds and hail might be here.
So, should we adjourn?
And this is God.
I think you could recess and we could reconvene at another time and finish the agenda at that time.
Okay.
We can finish it.
You guys, you got this, Rosie?
I don't know, he's telling me that, the same thing, strong winds and hail.
And this is the right, or I'll shut to you guys?
Getting torn attic activity?
No.
No, no for attic activity, just hail in trouble, that's, that's where we're at.
Power lines dropping north of town.
That's where the storms are now, right?
Yeah.
With the sound of the wind, I think it's too late to get out of it.
It's here already. I might as well finish.
Is it all unlocked in case we need to run for it? Is it all unlocked in case we need to go get in it?
For me? I'm the only one that knows the...
Last one in.
We will continue then. M, discussion of possible action to approve the food truck ordinance?
That's tabled.
That's tabled?
Yeah.
We don't have that information, so we will table that. N, discussion of possible action to approve the quote from Daniel Construction for the flooring, the cemetery restrooms.
Do we want to withdraw that since we require the complete?
Yeah.
We don't need individual quotes anymore.
I think that's on here, on the next item.
Discussion of possible action to approve the quote from Dobbs Construction for the complete build of the cemetery restrooms.
Keith called me this afternoon and wanted me to point out, out of that forty thousand dollar estimate, that seventeen five of that is stone work to match the walls out there. And that if we wanted to go with a lesser material like smart siding or something of that nature, uh, it would be, it would bring that bit down. So here's where there's forty thousand, two twenty-seven, thirteen two, which includes, electrical work, plumbing, concrete, uh, overhead door. The expensive part is the masonry.
Yeah.
And he said he could ask another. He asked to vendors for quotes on that, but was only able to get a quote back from the one that he could ask in that room. Where would we get the funds to purchase this? We have got money in the cemetery fund that I honestly cannot tell you how much.
Literally just turned my computer off. Want me to look?
You wanna ask for another quote?
I think maybe we ask for another masonry quote.
Another masonry quote, maybe another height of exterior.
Yeah. Well, I know, he said smart siding would be a lot cheaper. Problem with smart siding, you gotta paint it.
Or maintenance.
Some of the, some of the woodwork out there's already needing painted.
I know, I've been meaning to do that, but...
Yeah, I know.
It won't quit raining long enough for it to dry out to paint.
That's the truth.
I'd suggest maybe we table it, ask him to get another masonry quote.
I agree.
Okay, we'll table that. For more information, get, I'm glad you got a whole one and it got everything included, cause that's what we asked for from last time. We'll table. Go to P. Nope, we did P. Q. Discussion of possible action to take over eleven lots on Second Street that are being donated by Richard Seminole?
Richard Seminole, he wants to give us those eleven lots over on Second Street. No strings attached. He just wants them out of his name and, you know. I thought I might bring it to the board. That's where we're going for that pavilion.
My opinion, that'd be the best thing that we ought to do.
Yeah.
If we put some buck flag or something there, you know, with his deal, so, you know, I think we ought to take them over.
And that way we'll, we'll take care of it.
I think all he would need to do is...
I think he's already...
Probably prepare a deed.
I think he's already done that and he's with Jack.
Oh, okay.
So, uh, you know, he was willing to do anything with, with two of, you know, he just wants, he just wants the town to answer that.
Okay. You gonna make that a motion?
I'll make the motion.
You make it.
Okay. Uh, make a motion to take the eleven lots on Second Street that are being donated by Richard Seminole.
Oh, oh, Harold got a second. Roll call, please.
We don't need to raise flags up there. Oh, Randy?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Discussion of the possible action to accept the resignation from Bert Drys as fire chief?
That really didn't need to be on there, and I was really hoping it wouldn't, because I don't like to talk about it. It's, it's a done deal. I have sent my, I have sent my paperwork to the state to retire as of June the thirtieth.
I would say, Bert, thank you very much.
Forty-five? Forty-five. The reason I don't like to talk about it, because it's been two, two-thirds of my life and it's something that I am going to miss like I just went right on.
I understand. Thank you very much for your commitment for doing that.
Yes.
Thank you, Bert.
Thank you.
Sad to say that, you know, you won't be our police chief, I mean, our fire chief, excuse me. Fire chief.
I've got the new profession.
Hey, you know, Colonel Sanders made his chicken when he's sixty-six years old.
Yeah. So... And I have told the, I've told the firefighters that they may apply for the position. How that works is, uh, we don't have to advertise if we hire within or hire a previous employee. We've got some very qualified people on the department who did an excellent job.
Right, they're getting a new, new house, new fire chief.
A motion to accept the resignation from Bert Drys, fire chief.
Regardless, we all second that. Roll call, please.
Harold?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Yes.
I wanted to say no, but it doesn't matter.
Again, thank you, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
New business, any matter not known, which could not have been reasonable for soon, prior to the time of posting agenda, according to section three-one-one-nine, title twenty-five O.S.
I have one item that I might, I've spoken with Aaron and Keith, representative from C-H-S, and he wants to ask permission, we do, for him to be able to put a sign temporarily in season for the semi-trucks to park next to, or to restrict vehicle parking, next to Memorial Park on Iowa Street, I believe it is. And he would, he got a sign that he would, and I've allowed, I've thought about it and agree with him, if, if he lets us work with him, or he works with us, he'll move the sign whenever we move the park and only put it out when it's necessary for the semi-trucks bringing weed in and taking it out, which will be a very short time throughout the year during harvest and when they're moving weed out. We'll know if we can get permission to allow him to do that. Rather than change the thoroughfare roadway.
Right. And we've got, though we have no parking signs there now...
We have one up, up by the highway. And he said that, like, before the time, they used to do one...
I'd recommend we take it out and do a temporary, that way it's no parking when the sign is in the, in the resting time, free open.
I don't believe that you can take any action on that because it wasn't on the agenda. And this isn't some emergency thing or something that was unforeseen at the time, this, you know.
That's probably a decision David can make without it.
Okay. Yeah, all the power. I'm sorry.
That, that would be the advice I would take, if that's what the board, I mean, tells me, I think that I, that is within my scope. I don't know, I read the manual on how to be an administrator yet. I bet you didn't.
He didn't, sure. Sorry, David, that would be a violation of that, you need law, you have to act.
Tell me what to, even to, even to advise me.
All we can tell you is use your best knowledge.
City of Columbus? Did you wait all night for that?
That.
I'm sorry.
We gotta turn it in.
We gotta turn it in.
I'm sorry, but that's the law. What, I don't know, what is new business then?
What you just said, emergency.
Yeah, anything that was unforeseen at the time, the, the agenda was posted.
Okay.
So this was unforeseen.
I've spoken to him before.
You've spoken to him, we don't know.
At the time, they could've been on the agenda.
It's one of those things, it's one of those things that you want it to be legal, you don't want somebody else to come back and say, "No, I, if I do this, I'm gonna park my truck there" or something, I mean, you know, that's...
Councilor Portia report? David?
Nothing.
Harold?
I don't know.
Bert?
I don't know.
Randy?
Nope.
Motion adjourned.
Second. Roll call, please.
Okay, Harold?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
End of the utilities, Authority of Trustees, regular meeting, June 15, 2023, Town Hall Council Room. Roll call. Yes, here.
Harold?
Yeah.
Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Here.
Randy?
Here. Consider approval of the consent agenda minutes of the meeting. Approval of the claims as follows. May purchase orders, 19,007, 66, 13. June purchase orders, 125, 76, 38. June meter refunds, zero. Treasurer's report?
I'm moved to accept the consent agenda.
I will second that. Roll call, please.
Bert?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes. Citizen comments? Other scheduled business discussed, accept, approve, deny, reject, and/or take action on the following. A, discussion of the possible action to approve the 23, 24 Hennessy Utilities Authority budget.
Make a motion to approve the 20, 23, 24 Hennessy Utility Authority budget.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Harold?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes. Be discussion of possible action to approve from F5 to repair wells 1 and 5.
Otherwise, no, it's great.
Back of Dobbs.
Oh, it's the back of Dobbs?
Back of Dobbs, that's where that quote is.
It says, well number one repaired and well number five repaired, supply, equipment and labor to jig out four inch line, remove Z riser, then install new four inch gate valve, not enough room to install the valve inside the building. Bring the new four inch ductile iron line to build and install the new check water valve, meter and four by two tee as well flush, all materials supplied by the town of Hennessy. Estimated cost is $8,000, estimated equipment and labor is $5,000.
So wait a minute. He's quoting this material cost, but then it says material to be supplied by the town?
Yeah, I mean, he said we could do it either way.
Oh, that's an either or?
Yeah, same price.
Oh, okay.
He was supposed to attach from Richard, which we get the parts from the same guy.
Oh, okay.
But, and number one, it's, it's more expensive, because it's pretty rough. I mean, there's a ratchet strap holding it together, and the meter's broken, so that's, that's one that definitely needs rebuilding.
And then supply labor to redo the plumbing and replace the check valve, sampling port, and install a six by two tee for well flush, the materials supplied by the town of Hennessy. Estimated cost, the materials is $1,600, estimated equipment and labor is $2,000.
So, I'm just questioning, material cost on this, is this his cost or is this our cost?
It would be our cost.
Okay.
We had with Richard together out there, and we kind of talked about it.
Okay.
So we're just talking just under $17,000 to repair the wells 1 and 5?
And this, this is just the plumbing from the well to the main line, correct? Is it pretty much all of that, or?
Yeah.
Okay. So all of that would be new?
Yeah.
Make a motion to accept the bid from F5 to repair wells 1 and 5.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Harold?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
C, discussion of possible action to approve and repair the high service pump and purchase new stainless steel, one for the water plant.
That one was on there, what, a couple months back? And finally, they're saying for the stainless impeller is over a year and a half, and right about, to get that one in. So basically, go back right now with the brass one, that's only lasting about two years, because that's really the only option. And then he's going to go ahead and have a stainless one there and ready for when this one does get chewed up and go back, so we can go ahead and put a stainless one in there.
Do you have a price on that?
The stainless one? Not a complete one. I know just the impeller was $12,000.
$12,000. And how long have we had the brass one?
They only last, I mean, roughly two years.
But how long?
And it's out now.
Oh, it's out now?
Yeah.
What are they running on this?
For the brass one or the stuff?
Yeah, the brass.
The brass one is $14,000.
$14,000?
That's for everything.
That's for the whole pump, too.
Yeah, that's the whole pump, get it silt and brought through.
And we have one stainless steel and color pump. I mean, we had it installed.
How long has it been?
13 years, right?
We've got a two-year-old stainless steel pump, and they looked at it, and it was virtually nowhere. And it's two years old, I mean, two, the brass one, it's hard down, it's out. I'm not telling how long that stainless steel has been.
And the, what'd you say, you thought the stainless steel would be, well?
Just, just the impeller, $12,000.
But we can't get one for a year and a half, so you're proposing to do this, and go ahead and order a stainless steel one?
He's going to go ahead and get one, but we won't pay for it, we'll...
We need it, no, we need it.
The whole shell for it.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah.
I have pictures of them, if you have one, please.
Sure.
Yep.
I'll give you a can of this stuff.
That's the brass one, about two years' wear. And that's a stainless.
Just some turns to the pump.
Yep.
Okay.
That's the brass one, that's for you. It's stainless steel.
So they just want to put that on, that they don't need that? Motion on that, right?
I don't think so.
Since he's going to charge it. Yeah, but yes, you have our okay to, to do that. New business, any matter that not known, which could be, have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda, in accordance with the section of 311-9, Title 25 OS? Citizen comments?
Well, we start having supper again. Just saying, I'm ugly.
As long as she don't cook.
I don't. I'm not going to be going to pin that, because he's right.
So you all didn't vote on item C?
Boney could cook. Well, Boney could. What, Bart?
So you all didn't vote on item C?
No.
Until you get it, you don't want to, until you need it?
The suppliers just going to sell. Going to hold it on to their...
Okay, I understood that.
And then, when we, yeah.
Okay.
Counselors persons?
Motion adjourned.
Second. Roll call, please.
No.
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.